Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Southboro School Committee Open Meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. In attendance, in addition to myself, are Ms. O'Neely, Ms. Prinek, Ms. Stolwender. So we have a quorum, and we will move on to the first order of business, which will be the recognition of retirees.
Sure, so it's with great pleasure this evening that I get to recognize four of our longstanding employees who have made the decision to retire. I did employ our best person to try to convince them otherwise, and that was Keith the Boy.
So no wonder that failed, is that what you're saying?
He failed miserably.
So this evening, again, I would like to recognize our four retirees. So we have seven retirees in Southboro this year, and between the seven retirees, they have over 138 years of experience. So although we are excited for their next chapter in their career, we also recognize that as a loss of expertise and commitment and dedication of the four employees that I'll acknowledge this evening. So we're happy for you. Too bad we couldn't convince you otherwise, but I think I would retire too if I could. So we have Nancy Bowman, who is retiring after many years serving as a kindergarten teacher at Finn School. Prior to joining Finn in 1989, she served as a kindergarten teacher in Holliston, and Clayton hired her in 1989. No, it wasn't Clayton, right? So, and I did look at your first year salary. You were half-time at the time, so you made $10,798 back in the day. And you're hired by Assistant Superintendent Robert E. Melkin and Superintendent Dennis DeSalvo. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to the kids and students at Finn School. You have been outstanding. You've been so dedicated to the profession and the families and the students, and you will leave behind a legacy, and the work that you've done will endure in the lives of our students, so thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you have five minutes for a speech.
Oh, I do? I didn't prepare. I'm honored, thank you.
No, I promise. I was acknowledging the fact that it was probably pretty, it's not the best retirement acknowledgement to invite our retirees to a school committee meeting. There's probably, I'll have to think about the best way to honor our retirees in the future, but thank you for coming this evening. So next, we have Kim Bowker, who is the Trotter Nurse. And before coming to our district in Southboro, she served as at Mass General Hospital as an adolescent pediatrician. And prior to that, I didn't know this, you were a float nurse in Northboro.
All over.
All over. So she floated across our three districts. And I think that the past two years have been extraordinary, so I just want to thank you for all the time prior to the pandemic that you've provided to our students. You've been such an integral part of the Trotter community, volunteering on the Washington trips and being part of committee work and just being a key part of the culture at Trotter. So I wish you well in your encore career, whatever that might be. And you leave behind big shoes to fill, so thank you for your hard work and dedication. I'm not sure if Gary or Keith have any words you would like to add.
I'd like to hope that she'll be a sub nurse.
That's part of the retirement agreement, isn't it?
I thought so, yes.
No, you know, Kim has served Trotter so well over the years, and I thought of her often during the pandemic, but then I went back to our Washington trips, and I said, "I don't know what was worse." All the things that she had to do while taking 150 eighth graders to DC, but you know how much you're going to be missed and certainly loved, and, you know, I know this day is, it's been tough for me to even think about it because of all the time we've had together, but I wish you the best, Kim.
And you still can go on the Washington trip.
Yeah, it's still a possibility.
All right, next, we have Barbara Johnson, so who has served as the ELL teacher in Southboro for a number of years. And I learned a little bit about your career prior to coming to Southboro. So you served as a grade five and six teacher at the St. Peter School in New York, and Framingham Public Schools, grade one and two combined bilingual Spanish teacher, and the Krista McAuliffe Regional Charter School, and also Wellesley Public Schools as a year as an ESL tutor. And then you joined Trotter and Neri.
Neri, actually, they're not students.
You joined Neri.
No students.
No students. So at Neri, you started at...
No ESL, Neri and Finn.
So Neri and Finn. And then you are ending your career at Finn School as an ELD teacher, and you've done amazing work, and I know that you leave behind big shoes to fill, and I think Rhoda has shed a few tears, Clayton?
Many tears.
And Clayton has shed a lot of tears, so we thank you for your commitment and dedication to the district and the students, and we wish you well in your retirement. And lastly, we have Amy Riley, who is leaving Trotter School as a science teacher. And what I didn't realize was that Amy did her practicing teaching at Neri School and joined Trotter, I think after your practicum, the next year you were hired as a math and social studies teacher, and served as sixth grade math and social studies. And then you gained your license in science, and you've been a science year, a science teacher at Trotter for many years. And your passion and dedication to the Trotter students has been evident. You've been part of clubs and homework clubs and the climate and culture at Trotter, and you'll be sorely missed, and we wish you well in your encore career, whatever that might be. You can come back and sub too. And Mr. Herschek, I'm not sure if you have any words.
Amy possesses everything you want in a teacher, a passion for the content, a supportive personality. Greatest compliment I could say is I'd want my own children to have you as a teacher. You probably don't want to have my children as in your family, but honestly, you know, if you've ever seen Amy's classroom, it's calm, it's collected, it's organized, and the energy and the culture she's always built has been tremendous over the years. So thank you, Amy, for those years of service.
Thank you, Karen.
Congratulations.
And thank you all for the opportunity. It's been wonderful.
And you can always un-retire, I think that is a possibility.
I thought that letter said I couldn't.
I crossed it off, so. But again, thank you. I'm not sure if I turned it over back to the chair for any words.
We can fix those letters. There's something like that that needs to be changed.
I still have it.
Well, it's great to, it's, you know, it's always sad to have, you know, good teachers retire. I guess hopefully it will be a happy transition for all of you, and, you know, you are part of, having been part of our most important resource, you know, as far as our kids, you know, in our district, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Greg said, which is like, you know, congratulations and good luck in your encore decisions, whatever those are, you know? And you've earned this, so congratulations to you. Thank you for your service, and, you know, I feel like that you're as teachers, as educators, as room monitors, you know, I'm sure you've done so many like support groups where you've been in after-school programs, et cetera. We really appreciate it, so thank you.
Are we going to go down the row? No, but I mean, you're just, you're the heart and soul of what happens, and, you know, we just kind of zoom in here once a month or whatever and do these little things, but, you know, there's so many things we know that you all do that we don't even see, and that's what really makes everything so successful, and could not be more appreciative. So thank you, and good luck with whatever comes next.
Ditto, everything down the row. But yeah, thank you so much for your service. The best is probably yet to come, so good luck, and don't forget us.
I'm just echoing what everyone else says. Thank you to all of you and best of luck. I'm sad that my daughter never had the opportunity to see, to be with some of you because you're leaving before she gets to Trotter, but good luck to all of you.
Just to add one thing, as I'm thinking about our teachers as a group, we are, I think as a town, I think as, I can't speak for the district, but I'll go ahead and say as a district and as a school committee, you know, we are, I think, blessed to have a great relationship with the teachers. As I've gone through, you know, watching the news, okay, over the last couple of years, and watched so many situations where that's not the same, we're really thankful to have the teachers that we do. So thank you again.
And if it's the will of the chair, I'd like to recommend taking a 10-minute recess because we do have cake, and this is the first cake that we've had in many years, so I think great.
You must have found out that I never refuse cake. Okay, anyplace.
We could be an unpopular chair and not make this the recommendation.
I think let's, let's have cake.
Yes, right.
So we're, we're in recess, and we'll...
All right, we are back from recess and we are continuing the South Borough Community Meeting. So, next up is public comments. I don't see much of the public, no offense Dave, but all right. So, next up is new business update from principals.
So, we'll start with Principal Ryan with an update.
Thank you, Greg. I'd like to start by thanking the Finn SOS for our wonderful Staff Appreciation Week, the generosity from all parents and especially me of Benoit was incredible. As Roger was talking earlier, you know, we do have a great relationship with our community educators to parents and the community, and we are all very fortunate to work in such a supportive community like South Borough. The rallying around us and making us all feel special was incredible. I'd also like to recognize and congratulate Kathy Wilson. Kathy Wilson is our school psychologist at Finn. She recently received the South Borough Youth and Family Services Fourth Annual Lori Sugarman Whittier Wellness Award. It's a mouthful, which you will observe. The award is given out to individuals who have promoted to make South Borough a better place for all. Kathy is a strong advocate for children's mental health and she's committed to making sure every child at the Finn Schools feels safe and connected. I'd also like to recognize Jennifer Henry, Finn School's preschool administrator, she'll be presenting in a little bit, for her organization of the First Annual Early Childhood Fair this past Saturday. From what I heard, there was quite a showing, I was unable to attend. Jennifer said about fifty families showed up and there were about ten community sponsors. The months of May and June are very important months at the Mary Finn School. For many of our students, it's their first time that they need to bring closure to relationships. And what that means is they've established relationships early on with us, connections, and now it's time to bring an end to those and to move on to new environments or new relationships. Especially for our first graders, they transition to a new unknown school where they're expected to make new connections within an unfamiliar environment. We do a lot of preparation with our kids in the month of May, slowly exposing them to what the end will bring, the feelings associated with it, and that it's okay. To this point, we have a lot of activities taking place within this month of June. Last week, we had our Finn School Field Day. Lots of existing preschool records were broken in the discus, javelin, and the mile. Friday, June tenth is our K and Grade One Field Day. We're so excited to have lots of parent volunteers. On June fourteenth and fifteenth, we have, and sixteenth, we have our preschool graduation ceremonies, and invitations were sent out by classroom teachers. And on the fourteenth and fifteenth, kindergarten is having a farewell to kindergarten celebration. Also, on the sixteenth is Finn's First Grade Farewell. It's a bigger celebration, an afternoon of fun and outdoor excitement. A lot of our first graders are a little apprehensive about what the Woodward School brings, so we're scheduling Step Up Day for June twenty-first, where our first graders will be visiting, touring, and meeting staff at the Woodward School. Some other events happening at Finn, today we had Kim Evers, South Borough's librarian. She was talking to her students about the South Borough Library and how students can get their library card. In academics, some updates in kindergarten. Jen's going to speak about preschool, kindergarten in Grade One, students are finishing up a unit on persuasive writing, and teachers are conducting their end-of-the-year assessments. In math, students are learning about measurement, weights, and capacity. And students in both K and One are learning about the elements of a story, plot, storyline, character development. And as always, I need to put on a plug for the Finn Family Garden. We do have tomatoes planted, cucumbers, eggplants, green onions, and some other veggies. A sign-up notice will be sent out to families from Kristen Peterson, our K-Team leader. We do encourage and select parent volunteers to maintain the garden over the summer and drop off anything that the garden yields, which hopefully will be a lot of tomatoes and cukes, at the food pantry. So, lots of busy things happening at the Finn School.
All right, questions? Ms. Ryan?
So, I have a javelin question, but I'm not scheduled.
Oh, you're just... No, that was just a joke.
All right, thank you.
So, I'm going to present for, Mr. Mucci has written a novel that I'm going to share.
He is on father--
I think this is a test of my ability to read.
And he is on father duties.
He is on father duties, and I'm representing--
Mr. Mucci duty.
Mr. Mucci. When he got, it's three pages, so get ready. Lots going on at the Woodward School. So, Field Day, they are looking forward to their Field Day, which was rescheduled from last Friday. This year, they are planning a day of fun outside with a portion of the day being used for team building and individual games and challenges and other, and other community partnerships. We'll be welcoming, they'll be, so now, he wrote it in the first person, so I'm changing it. They will be welcoming guests from Harvard University and the Think First Injury Prevention Program. The South Borough Fire Department will also be joining them to discuss summer safety and may even be bringing a vehicle for students to explore. They'll be kicking off the summer reading program in partnership with the South Borough Public Library, and they are very excited to be hosting their annual book swap after a two-year hiatus. Eyes on Owls SOS sponsored presentation. Today, they welcomed Marcia and Mark Wilson from Eyes on Owls. This creative arts presentation was sponsored by the SOS. Eyes on Owls introduces students to the owls of New England and beyond. Mark and Marcia shared the field marks, signs, and skills that children can use to find owls in the wild. Through their original photography and published books, they shared unique characteristics of owls, including their diet, habitat, and cons. Students were introduced to six live owls, from small screech owls to the great horned owl. Students loved this up-close and interactive introduction to different species of owls. On Monday afternoon, Kathy Lozot joined our pre-K through eight, Kathy Lozot, our pre-K through eight mathematics coordinator, along with Brian Poffey, a content developer, introduced staff to ST Math. ST Math is a pre-K through eight visual instruction program that leverages the brain's innate spatial temporal reasoning ability to solve mathematical problems. Next year, ST Math will be used to support and strengthen our students' mathematical thinking and learning through interactive problem solving. Step Up Day has been scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-first. Transitioning students at Finn Wood or Nearie will visit their new school to tour the space and meet some grade-level teachers and specialists. Principal Ryan, Principal Valenti, and Mr. Mucci have been collaborating to ensure a smooth transition for students. Last week, our second-grade students performed a singing concert for staff and students with theme of music through our world. Students did a wonderful job performing, sharing the meaning behind the lyrics. This week, third-grade string students are performing their end-of-year recitals. Next week, the entire third grade will be performing their Memorial Day program for staff and students, which was rescheduled from last month. Since these performances are being held during the school day and will welcome guests, South Borough Access Media has graciously offered to record the concerts that will be shared out with the entire Woodward community. We are so proud of all of our students, especially and our, and our staff joining. He's our music strings teacher. We're looking forward to holding in-person concerts and performances next year. Chapter Two.
We're two.
This, this one's theme is compassion, and to help promote and recognize the many ways that students demonstrate compassion, we've created the Woodward Has Compassion Display. Every time a student is observed demonstrating the care theme of compassion by a staff member or peer, a sun is added to the display with their name on it. The goal is to brighten up Woodward as much as we can by showing compassion to others. Students stop and look every morning to see the new additions. As of this afternoon, we have over one hundred and forty-three suns representing one hundred and forty-three acts of compassion towards others. And on May twenty-fourth, Woodward staff welcomed parents and families of our incoming Grade Two students to the annual orientation and tour. It was a huge success with over a hundred parents and guardians in attendance. I was joined by Grade Two teachers Colleen Black and Jen Seer, as well as Carrie Capella, our SLP, Cassie Purcell, our ELD teacher Jenny Bogart, our behavioral specialist, and Lisa Blay, one of our special education teachers. We shared all about our school and what students will experience as they become a member of the Woodward community. We ended with questions and answers and a tour of Woodward. The feedback we received has been extremely positive, and parents are grateful and excited to be back in our schools. The end.
Does anyone have any questions for Steve?
Now you're putting me on the spot.
Okay, I'll call him.
Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome. It was nice to share.
Yeah. It was lovely to hear about the compassion board.
Yeah.
That's true, that is true.
Aunt Neri?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to start by thanking the Neri staff members for their commitment this year to putting students in the middle of all our decisions that we make, creating such a welcoming learning environment for students each and every day. I also want to thank our SOS, as Clayton Ryan did, for Teacher Appreciation, Teacher Appreciation Week, specifically Jen Brenner, Stephanie Oisaki, and Julia Fialco, from breakfast and lunch to gift cards on the whoopee pie truck. It was a fantastic week. It was the first time our language teacher, who's from Spain, had a whoopee pie, and she asked us, "Where do you even get these?" So, she's a big fan, but it was really nice, and they've supported a lot of great resources for us throughout the year, so we are grateful to the SOS as well as the parents that support all of our fundraising efforts. As Principal Mucci mentioned, during last week's PLC, our grade-level teams were introduced to ST Math by Kathy Lozot and the trainer for ST Math, and we're looking forward to future trainings at the beginning of the year and identifying how to best incorporate this into our math blocks, understand and understanding how to use the data to drive our instruction. In the library, students are presenting research projects which have culminated in a gallery walk for students and staff to view each group's project. In our front hallway, we have a volume zoo where students in the fifth grade have created animals of their choice out of various-sized boxes, determine their individual and overall volume, and students in fourth grade have been very busy dissecting a cow's eye, a sheep's brain, and their individual squids. Lots of fruit on the hive. Our bulletin boards are filled with various art projects from clay masks, aluminum can flowers, and so much more, and we welcome anyone to come visit. We just have decided. It's been a busy few weeks, press as well. We had our incoming fourth-grade parent guardian orientation on the twenty-fifth with an amazing turnout. Five of our orchestra ensemble played for, performed for the students, but also provided tours, I mean, for the parents also provided tours. Parents enjoyed being in our school, and the students love showing Neri off to everyone. Big thank you to Kristen Tav and Jessica DeMatra for collaborating on this event with me. Chorus concerts, it was wonderful to have orchestra band and, orchestra band, and chorus concerts last week and one this week. Even, really special to be able to connect with some of our former students at the chorus concerts as they practice, the Trottier students, so we got to see a few of them, that was great. Thanks to Mrs. Bignese and Ms. Sherman, they did an exceptional job preparing our students for the performances. Great turnouts for each one, and our whole school got to view the concerts as well, and able to celebrate the accomplishments of their peers. We had a Memorial Day Assembly last Friday led by Mr. Wallach and Mrs. Sherman. Students learned about the history of Memorial Day. Four students played taps, and Mr. Wallach and Mrs. Colleen, students sang the Constitution song from Schoolhouse Rock. I want to remember that. We had our first Field Day in two years, and students engaged in a variety of games and activities. And kudos to Grade fourteen, who elongated the day for their students by creating stations such as Imagination Playground, Dash and Dot, and Osmo, developing coding skills, and SEL chalk activities, and those are just a few, there were many different activities. And thank you, huge thank you to the parents who volunteered their time. Field trips today was awesome. A boundless adventure field trip for our fourth-grade friends. And Boundless Adventure, their mission is to empower and inspire students to challenge themselves both mentally and physically. With challenges comes great confidence and achievement, and the feedback was fantastic from both students and staff. It ties into, the program ties into SEL practices and standards, and the teachers were saying the positive self-talk individually, but also to peers, encouraging them to persevere and engage in the activities, just fantastic. Fifth grade will embark on their trip next week, which includes the Freedom Trail and State House, and all staff and students will participate in a walking field trip to Art on the Trails next week. The installation is called Grow and Take Flight. Their very large wings and a field of flowers, which symbolizes the importance of exposing ourselves to good things in life so we can grow and take flight. That exhibit runs from June twelfth to September eleventh, and Mrs. Johnson and her artists have worked so hard on this project, we can't wait to see their work. On Flag Day, the fifth-grade band will be practicing their marching skills as they parade around the school and through fourth-grade recess. And today was our fifth-grade volleyball tournament, Finnegan versus Finnegan in the end. And, yeah, it was quite intense, but Finnegan Fruit Loops ended up winning, but everybody celebrated the great sportsmanship, and Mrs. Nash did a terrific job leaving that as well as our Field Day. We have our fifth-grade farewell coming up next Friday, and tomorrow, we have ten former Neri students from Algonquin joining us as part of their day of service. So, teachers, they'll be supporting teachers in the classroom and specialists. We had originally assigned them to help us in the courtyard, but I think the ring's going to alter those plans, but we're excited to have them back. And then, as Principal Ryan mentioned, looking forward to our fourth, our fourth grade, third grade friends coming to visit on Step Up Day on the twenty-first, and I'm looking forward to going to visit Woodward next Tuesday, each of the third-grade classrooms to get to know them and answer some questions. We're already busy planning for the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year. Teachers have organized a summer book club where we're going to focus on identifying books for a year-long focus on district themes, cultural diversity, acceptance, and kindness role. And this will be done during our new buddy classroom times next year. So, looking forward to it, lots of great things. Thanks for listening. You have any questions?
Questions, Kathy? You know, just a quick aside, since you mentioned SOS a couple of times, you know, I received a very nice acknowledgement from SOS, I think all the school committee members did, a thank you, and I'll tell you something, now, I received a new sports car, I don't know, but the rest of the committee received. I did have to return it because of the commonwealth restrictions on value of gifts accepted, sadly, I had to do that, but that was such a nice, you know, it was such a nice gesture, you know, to actually receive that, and so I'd like to say publicly, thank you, I'm sure we all may have written notes, but wanted to mention it.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Next up?
Mr. Herschuk. Kathy, I'm excited, I had some money on the Finnegan Fruit Loops. It seems good. I appreciate your stuff. Just in regards to some school culture and events that we've had, we, since we last met, we did host our dance for all three grades, much to my chagrin. Stairway to Heaven was not played at the end, but I think it was a wonderful night, students had a lot of fun, and I had a student who sincerely asked me, "Can we do it again next week?" So, and she really, really wanted to have another dance. So, that was a great event. I do want to recognize some music, concerts and performances, we had a chorus concert last week. Band and orchestra will be playing tomorrow night. Next Tuesday, we will have our Jazz Night, and Connor Jenks, who is a Trottier alumni, will come back to join our, 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 our students here, and he's part of a wedding band called Hot Mess, so we're very excited for him to join. But I want to share, today, we actually invited South Borough senior citizens for our big band performance, and if you ever need a pick-me-up, I will invite you back. It was really just a reminder of the impact that our music program has on the community. It was such a wonderful event. Brent Trottier was there, and it was great for him to come back. The seniors kind of mingled afterwards and with our performers, and it was just very heartfelt, and it was, it was probably one of the highlights of my year. So, thank you to Mr. Clark for organizing that. As part of Memorial Day traditions, we did have sixth grader Nathan Glazier read the Gettysburg Address during the ceremonies in South Borough over the holiday weekend. We also hosted our annual fun run, we had not hosted that in three years, which without SOS support, once again, would not have been successful. And on the horizon, and we're also hosting a therapy dog event on June fourteenth. We have a leadership group that works with South Borough Youth and Family Services, and they reached out to an organization called People and Pets, and they're going to be bringing five or six therapy dogs here, so we all can become educated on the benefits of therapy dogs. So, if anyone would like to attend, it'll be after school. And on the horizon, we do have our end-of-the-year awards and last-day ceremonies, our eighth-grade banquet on June seventeenth, and a lip-sync Field Day and some trivia involved for students on the second-to-last day. So, very excited about that. In regards to some of our data collection efforts, we just completed the Trottier Student Survey today. Students had taken that during first period. We'll look at these results over the summer with our leadership team and use this to help cultivate some, some practices within the school-wide environment, within, within the classroom. We also completed our spring Dibble's literacy collection. We're going to be looking at this data to identify struggling readers and, who need support, and to build targeted interventions moving forward. In regards to our culturally responsive work, very proud of our GSA presentation to our faculty on May sixteenth. The students did a wonderful job. They actually, they surveyed our faculty in advance and said, "What would you want to hear from us?" Our staff asked for advice on how to best support the LGBT coop students as a school community, information about different categories of gender and gender identity, advice about creating a safe space in the classroom, and advice about using pronouns and name changes. I just want to thank our guidance counselor, Jessica Anderson, who helped work with the GSA to build this presentation. The students did an amazing job. They gave us, they were informative, they were engaging, they were heartfelt, they shared personal stories, and gave us some wonderful advice moving forward. Very simple things, listen to what students are saying to each other, and talk to students that are being rude or insensitive. Don't say you're too young to know, and you're not too young to be making decisions. Talk about and teach students-- Talk about and teach students about gender and sexual orientation and diversity. Wear something that indicates that you are supportive of the LGBTQ plus community, like a rainbow ribbon or bracelet. And make safe space and provide artwork flags invisible and within your classroom. So these are not, this is low hanging fruit. I think the fact that they walked away with saying, we could do more and we could do better. And, and I was just immensely proud of the students. Their poise, their presentation, their thoughtfulness was really celebrated by our faculty as a whole. I also want to recognize that our World of Difference Peer Leaders Program concluded last week. This has been a huge undertaking for the district. We've talked about it throughout the course of the year, so to kind of see the fruits of the labor come forward was pretty amazing. Our seventh and eighth grade, you know, students conducted three lessons in our, with our sixth grade classes and for all sixth graders to participate in. They talked about implicit bias, responding to acts of discrimination and promoting inclusivity for all students. I want to give a huge thank you to Julie Jenks and Pam Lunder, who had taken on this, this work, which is, was a huge undertaking into all our students. I had an opportunity to observe these, these sessions and I couldn't do this as a seventh and eighth grader. And you know, they, the topics which they, they dove into, the questions they asked, their responses, their presence was just really impressive. And I think the foundation really has been built for, for great success moving forward. Next week, we are going to Algonquin, I believe with Melican as well, to celebrate, you know, our first year, excuse me, this Friday.
Two thirty.
Thank you, thank you. Correct, two thirty this Friday. So we'll be going to Algonquin to celebrate this, this year-long endeavor. In addition, as part of our culturally responsive work, our summer reading program is out again. I want to thank Mrs. Allison for collecting a range of novels and for, for our community. It also is going to celebrate the theme of windows and mirrors once again. In regards to technology, I want to recognize Jen Devlin, who applied for and received two grants from the Southbury Community Fund. One grant was for Oculus VR, you know. And another grant is for drones, so. Yes, and next year's theme is, we are watching you. So this, I think it just, it's just another example of us kind of being creative on how to bring, you know, more technology into school, work on our digital literacy, computer science standards and really just try to engage students as, as much as possible. So they'll run through some eighth grade electives, they'll be taking place and we'll use these in our tech ed classrooms. And as she, you know, explained this to our faculty that, you know, she's hoping that all departments and classes can kind of tap into these resources. I just want to have, share with some academic highlights with you. Our civics action projects through our eighth grade social studies have come to a conclusion and I think our students have learned about the process of change. You know, some notable accomplishments, we had a group that focused on clubs and organizations. And hopefully through their work, we're going to bring an after-school cooking class, chess club, potentially table tennis and debate team next year. We also had a group that has advocated for additional water fountains here at Trotter. So currently we have one water fill station on the first floor. They feel it's important to bring another one to the second floor and hopefully with their work moving forward, that they've built the foundation so we can support that, that investment. We also had a group that examined sports here at Trotter Middle School. And with some of their prompting and energy, we may be bringing soccer to Trotter in the fall. That's in the first time in Trotter's history. I'd like to also recognize some of the work in our eighth grade ELA, ELA classes. Teachers are really focusing on student presentation and research. We've had teachers create TED Talks for our eighth graders and Genius Hour. So this, these, these are opportunities for students to present and use technology. But more importantly, students get to choose what they want to present on. And you know, and I think it's so, I think it's so important when you give student choice and when they have an opportunity to talk about things that they're passionate about. I saw presentations on why dogs are better than cats, which I agree. How to do a proper wheelie on a bicycle. A student talked about dialects and accents and how they developed over time, fly fishing, how to build a boat, field hockey techniques and sustainable farming. So, so lastly, I also want to recognize Martha Bachmann in our art elective. Our students have created a virtual art elective show, which will be disseminated to the community through our weekly OCN. The work is just amazing and really is impressive in terms of just the talent that we have here. And I also want to recognize our mural club. If you've walked around the, the building, you have historic, well, there's some murals here and you historically have seen some artwork with some inspirational quotes. This has been a great tradition at Trotter. Kathleen, you have a mural coming down to Mary. So as you walk out tonight, if you look in the lobby, the completed murals are done and they will find a home for, for next, for next year. So it's, there's about a group, about a dozen students each year take on this, this work. So that's it now. It's Trotter, any questions?
The mural, is it an elective?
It's an after-school. It's after-school club, yes.
I have a comment.
Please.
Just on the Oculus and Drone.
Yes.
Project, were you kidding about the title or?
No, I'm kidding about the title. So I was just kind of workshopping it here.
Yeah, no, because I'm workshopping it too. I was saying, what about saying like the future is now?
I agree. I gotta work on my.
Carrie's still stuck in that.
And then I'll also say too, just some feedback on the dance. I mean, between my own students and just her friends, that was such a huge hit. They, I think, you know, holding it outside and the weather, it was, it was what it was, but they just had such a really, a really great time. And I think that there, I don't know if the seventh and eighth graders have not had that experience, right? Over the last two years. So I'm glad that you thought, you and the team said, let's combine it and allow them to have that. So question is, do you think going forward you'll step, you know, segment six versus seventh and eighth or keep it all together?
That's a great question, I think, because we hadn't had it and we wanted to open up to everybody. And I think sixth and seventh grade students were there in greater attendance that night. So, because I think the eighth graders also have their banquet. So I don't know how we're going to divide it up, but the goal I think we probably need to have like two or three next year. So we'll go from there, yeah. The weather was perfect for it, so.
The weather was perfect.
Yes, so it's, you know, the, the committee that put together all the things that they wanted with lights and smoke machine and everything. It was exactly what a young person would enjoy, so.
Yeah, the, that's.
Playlist, whoever was, I heard about the playlist.
That's Mr. Profs. He is, yeah, he is, and he is, I mean Keith knows, he's amazing. Yeah, they, he actually developed this DJ business to pay for sons to do events and put them through college. And they're going to be doing the SOS banquet and, I mean, the eighth grade banquet. And yeah, he's amazing and he's very generous with his time as well, so.
Anybody else? I have one right now. Okay, so on a more kind of serious note, and it's also a little bit of feedback about the World of Difference Program.
Sure.
You know, there was a recent incident at Trotter and that you said there were three topics that the group talked about. And the one that was on responding to acts of prejudice, I mean, I think it might say and/or violence. The, either the day after, when I started to have a conversation with my student about it, part of her feedback was, yes, well, we learned a lot about that from, because she said either the day before or maybe the week before, the, the peer leaders came into the classroom.
Sure.
And so they, she had the, the language, the vernacular to actually describe, you know, what, what was happening and, and place what would have been the right action or response. So I just thought that this is something that I was always looking for is that there's, what I'm teaching, what we're discussing in the home is also being supported and taught at school. So, and to see that she was getting that, I said, oh, you know, what did your teacher say? She said, we didn't even have to focus on what her teacher said. It's like, well, the peer media, peer group came in and we had these conversations. So just want to acknowledge that.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're trying to do more is be proactive with these conversations and this work. You know, I think historically, you know, we've done things reactionary, in a reactionary way. And I think, you know, the peer leaders work, I talked about the genocide education, these are all components that we need to, you know, build up in order to, to help, you know, combat, combat this, you know? And I'm glad that, you know, your daughter's hearing this and was able to use this, but, and you know, we can always do more, but, and it's starting, and I think it's important that we start in the sixth grade. And so they get, they get that experience and then they continue throughout the three years.
So just sort of piggybacking on Kamali's question. The, the peer leaders coming into the sixth grade, did that have, was that the timing just coincidental?
Yeah, so I think, you know, we had some growing pains with the, you know, with, it is a, I will say, I'm really impressed with our seventh and eighth graders, it's a year-long commitment. And, you know, and you know from your own, your own children's schedules, what they, their availability in the fall is not the same in the spring. And so for us to kind of get to that, you know, you know, at one point we were talking about five or six sessions and we were able to only do, do three this year, but the hope, the hope is.
They do them after school, right?
They do, yeah. Oh, we, we did a combination of things. So sometimes we would pull them from class, we would meet them during recess, before school, after school. So their commitment is, is to get the training is pretty impressive for, for middle school students. So, but timing wise, you know, ideally we wouldn't be waiting until June. So hopefully after, you know, kind of going through this year, you know, and having, you know, some returning members, we can start it up a little bit easier and we can kind of start truncating the, the sessions where our sixth grader.
So I guess my, my question is like for the older kids, right? Who are like part of the program, that's great, but like for the kids who are not, like I know, like eventually we'll like get them. But like what Kamali said about like having the, like vocabulary and like everybody's sort of like share definitions, like I think that is so important, right?
We, you know, as our leadership team has just, we were having internal conversations saying that, you know, the World of Difference Program is just one spoke. You know, the genocide education is another. What more can we do? And you know, some of the things we've talked about is just having great level team meetings and just putting it out there. You know, kind of like giving the Cliff Notes version of, of, you know, the World of Difference philosophy and, you know, the elements that, you know, they're trying to promote and put it out there at the beginning of the year and then let the World of Difference kind of lay, work layer on top of that.
Because eventually everybody will be.
Yep.
Will catch everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I just had sort of an overall comment, which is just that I just love hearing these updates and all the things that are happening. And what I, one thing I just really appreciate is all of the time and work and thought that goes into just the whole child kind of aspect and the transitions and the making sure that they feel, you know, looked up or looking at all the extracurriculars and all of that and just, it's just so much more than academics and it shows and it's just wonderful to see. So thank you for all of it.
Ditto, ditto, ditto.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I guess I just want to add on to that comment. My kids went to school a long time ago. And I think about all the effort, importance of social emotional wellbeing of kids today and what they, what they go through. And I kind of marvel at, you know, what's had to happen, you know, in, in the, in the efforts, you know, of the faculty, you know, and the strategy, if you will, and execution. So it's, you're all to be really commended for what you do. COVID nineteen update.
Sure, so actually I'll, I'll do a brief introduction. So we have.
Well, I'm so, I'm so sorry, I'm incorrect.
That was very intuitive.
Well, Jennifer is not here this evening.
Yes, so Jennifer, Dr. Lipton O'Connor is wearing her parent hat, which is her most important hat this evening and.
So you, so you will be? Or Mary Ellen will be?
I just need you to close your eyes. Imagine that my hair is a little bit curlier. My voice is a few octaves higher, I'm a few inches taller.
I just want to acknowledge that, you know, Dr. Lipton O'Connor, in her role as social emotional learning coordinator, works hand in hand with Mary Ellen Duggan, who is our wellness coordinator, at least, nurse leader. So they are constantly together, so I have to separate them from meetings so that I don't have to have meetings. So on behalf of the work of the district, Mary Ellen will present an update and answering questions. And those questions we can't answer, we will make sure they get back to Dr. Lipton O'Connor and will get back to the committee. So, Mary Ellen.
All right. So you can close your eyes and pretend I'm Jennifer. Do you think that's the next slide? We're going to just talk a little bit about the social emotional updates, since she was here last. All the schools have completed their screen, their social emotional screener and they're in the process of analyzing that data now. The educators are using the screen of data to inform with the class placement. As you know, that is a huge process and an undertaking that every year to put the students in the correct placement for classes and they are using the results of the social emotional screener to help them with that. And other data that's considered to inform our plans for next year as Jennifer and I work together to create the healthy and balanced learnings that we're hoping to create. We look at student attendance, counseling referrals throughout the year, their students' grades and graduation rates, results of the Equiotic, the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey results, the ESPT, which is the Substance Use Screener, the 504 and Special Education Referrals, Discipline Referrals, Student Hospitalizations and Student Parent Surveys that we've given out. So all of that data together helps us inform and make our plans for next year. So some work that we've been working on together, we got grants from the Metro West Health Foundation. We just found out about last week that we received eighteen, oh, one hundred and eight thousand dollars in grants. So, and those grants will go towards the expansion of our family success partnership collaboration that we have. And also Dr. Lipton O'Connor applied for a Castle Academy Fellowship and was accepted into that and the grant has covered the cost of that. And then membership with the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, which is an organization that provides resources and professional development for our community. By just having that membership, we can, we have access to more professional development and more resources. Some things that we've worked on recently is the webinar series, the parent support webinar series. So when we got the key indicator results from our Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, there were some results that we felt like we needed to do something. It couldn't wait to plan for the summer to do something for the fall, which we, which we are doing now with the suicide prevention programs for our students, but that we needed to give parents the tools in their toolbox for the summer when there's some unscheduled time and some downtime. So that's just the webinar series that we've done for the past two Tuesdays and then next Tuesday, that's the third one. The first one was on suicidality and having difficult conversations. The, Carrie, Carrie Tool and Dr. Medina presented on that last night was on cyber safety and social media and cyber bullying. And Dr. Lipton O'Connor, Dr. Medina presented, and we also had Erin Miller from the DA's office come in, DA Early's office and do, be part of the presentation. Then our final one is kind of a wrap up, a little bit about resiliency, what we can do for ourselves to promote our mental health and wellbeing as we're going forward. We are looking into suicide prevention programs for the high school and middle school. It's the ones where we've been looking at is signs of suicide. And then some mental health first aid trainings, which some of our staff have done for professional development, but we continue to look at that in our collaboration with the Youth and Family Services and FSP to help us with those professional development trainings. And Jennifer would like to thank all the teachers, staff, families and administrators for supporting this work as she has. for supporting this work as she has finished off her first year in this role. So I could take questions about that, maybe? We can collaboratively, I'm still, not so sure as well as she, except that.
Kim?
I have a question. First, I have a comment. I haven't gotten to, to the webinar from last night, but the first week was fantastic and highly recommend that all parents watch it, even if you don't think like suicide is sort of on your agenda, because I think a lot of the strategies that Carrie gave to parents were just like, they were so concrete and like, you know, they'll help, they'll help all kinds of parenting issues, really, honestly.
I think all of us will have that do say and don't say-
Yes, right, exactly.
Hanging on our fridge, because I use it with my thirty-seven-year-old children.
Right. And my question is, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that FSP program, like what it is?
Sure. So Family Success Partnership is, we contract with Assabon Valley Collaborative, is the Family Success Partnership, which are licensed mental health counselors and social workers who help do wraparound services for our families. So this, we've had this collaboration with them for years and year, probably at least ten years, I want to say. So when we have, in the school, when we've tried everything and then we've reached out to our community, Youth and Family Services, tried everything, and we, the FSP provides those wraparound services that we can't go into the home and help them with. So they have that, they have multilingual counselors that can help fill that gap that we don't have when we need them. They are just amazing, and I don't know where we would be without them, really, to just help support our students. What they saw this year, the reason we wrote the grant is this year, they saw a lot more requests along with the wraparound services for the one-on-one consultations with students to, to support the students. And so that's where, they spent a lot of time with that, so with this expansion of that, we hope to promote that, be able to fill in that gap for that one-on-one that might be needed.
And how do they, is it really school, like, school-related, so like struggles with school, or is it like sort of like the whole situation?
It's the whole, the whole, the whole family situation. It's wraparound services for the family.
And it's referred by the school, so like if a family is working with somebody, okay.
So they, there's a whole referral service, it comes to me, I speak to them, goes back to the team with their servers.
Okay. Awesome, that's great, congratulations, that's a great grant, huh?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Mary Ellen and Jennifer for writing the grant, taking the initiative. You know, we often talk about what can we do to support our families, especially coming out of, you know, two years of pandemic. And this proactive work that Mary Ellen and Jennifer are doing is exceptional and a hundred and eight thousand dollar grant is only going to help our work in this area. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, have we had this grant before? Or, and if not, how did we fund this prior to this?
So we have, and FSP has been a part, this is just expanding that program and adding on. So they're going, along with the one-on-one consultation, they'll be in the schools, they're a little bit more present in the schools, they might be assigned to the schools. They are going to do professional development for the staff, consultations for the staff, you know, so those kinds of things. So it's just expanding that program that we already have.
That's great. And that funds two years?
Yes.
And it is also important to note that it's across North Carolina, Agon Glen and South Carolina.
Do you, Mary Ellen or Jennifer, do you keep track of the usage, yeah, somewhere like, and so you can hopefully see over time that, you know, hey, we really got more families than any services, or wow, great, we have less, so?
So definitely, so there's a pre-referral-
Yeah.
That has to come through me, so I have everybody that's been referred from the whole district and then what happens after that? And we meet, gosh, I talk to FSP probably every week, but we meet regularly with Marie and myself and Jennifer and the FSP liaison and talk about the cases going forward.
I had a suggestion, I guess to Jennifer, I don't know, but the web series that has already been done, if you could throughout the summer, just kind of like push a reminder, a trigger out there to folks to say, hey, click here to watch such and such, right? You didn't attend on the day we hosted it, but, because, you know, here's three of them and now maybe things are a little bit more relaxed, you know, you're not running around all these different clubs, and so you can watch it. And then the other thing is, a lot, and I'm speaking from experience, a lot of us can't watch. We'll find less time to watch something than to listen, and especially for the programs that are going to like support the teenagers, the lessons. If you just take the video recording and load it to audio, and, you know, I don't know what the legal round, you know, rules are, but load it to audio, then you, we can put it on our devices and listen to it while we walk, while we're sitting, which is, especially when we're talking about emotional learners, maybe they're not so great at watching something, right? So we could listen to it while we're going on a walk to de-strat or something like that.
That's a great idea. We'll talk to our tech team.
Basically just ask one of your teenagers at Agon Glen.
Oh, they have all that new podcast footage, right? To piggyback on that, like a lot of the stuff that Carrie talked about and like her graphics, like those would be great, like make like little infographics that the district can share, like little bites of knowledge that we can like take it in.
I think what's exciting is that these workshops will endure, the event is going to be accessible in August and just as important in September, November, so we can push these out in periodic times because it's still relevant, timely information.
Yeah.
And this is, the webinar series was just like really quickly, we wanted to do something, so our plan's for next year to do something more regularly, on a regular basis, not just three in a row and then off in the summer, so.
I mean, this advice right now is really hard to get access to, I mean, to get professional, to get an appointment with a therapist-
True.
It's like impossible to happen, so like this is a really great resource for everyone.
And I think everybody needs to know that, well, you have lots of resources in the schools, and then through the summer, there's South for Youth and Family Services that people can reach out to also. There are resources on the website after the webinars, with, with the webinars where they're posted, there are resources for each topic with lots of helpful places to look if you need assistance during the summer when the school's not in session. But hopefully this will just continue to grow, and this is just the start. And I think prevention is where we need to focus, because it is giving everybody the tools and their toolbox that they need.
I have a question about the suicide prevention, I'm a suicide prevention researcher, so that's my interest. What exactly, what programs are you looking at, or is it still early in the process?
It's still really early. We did look at signs of suicide, and that's really the one that we've looked at so far. We haven't looked at any.
Because there's some, and I'm happy to, to help be involved in some of that and because I work with folks who do, I don't, I work with adults in suicide prevention, but I work with folks who do adolescents, but there's some really great training programs and assessment tools that like anyone can administer. So they don't have to have a mental health background, but teachers can administer them. Right now we're implementing it in barber shops, actually, in Rhode Island. So we're teaching like hair salon folks to how to assess and screen and then refer, like what to do when someone says yes, but that same kind of program can be implemented variously in schools.
So that's like the Q, we talked about QPR training for-
Yeah, I mean, there are different types of training. QPR is one of them, it's, that's a, it's one of the shorter ones, there are the eight-hour trainings too, which is probably not feasible, right? But you could integrate it into professional development.
So that'd be great, that will definitely- Thanks.
Mary Ellen, are you giving me a separate update?
Yeah.
Because this is, I'll wait till you go.
So you're the second one to do two.
Yeah, now, I'll take on my own persona. I'm not a doctor anymore, my hair's straightened, I spend hours straightening it, and I shrunk some. Okay, so now we have our new old business. Okay, there's still some more slides there, so.
Oh, you're, you're still-
I'm still on. So never did I think I'd be sitting here every week with all of you, but here we are again with the COVID-19 update. But before I start with it, I really need to say thank you to a lot of people that have helped us through the past two years. The nurses, especially in the clinical resource nurses or float nurses, for persevering through the multitude of updates and changes that have taken place over the last two years. They've done an amazing job keeping the students and staff in their classrooms healthy and safe and ready to learn. I need to thank the medical advisor team for the numerous hours that they've given of their time and talent. The members of this valued team each wore multiple hats, the community members, parent and medical professional, and they have volunteered countless hours to guide us through the past two years of the pandemic. We look forward to continuing this collaboration as we look ahead beyond COVID. They are invested in our school community and I am indebted to them for all they have done. I would have been remiss if I didn't voice my appreciation for the collaboration and working relationships that we, were forged with various town departments throughout the past two years, the Board of Health, the DPW, the Fire, the Police, and the Town Administration. This was definitely the silver lining of the pandemic. And now we're on to the old, new business of COVID. So since we last met, the case numbers in South Carolina have drastically changed. When we were here the last time, we had eighty-three cases, and now this week, as of today, we have eighty.
It looks like they all went to North Carolina.
Exactly, so this is nice that they both don't peak at the same. Throughout the whole pandemic, the towns have taken turns, so it's been nice, that's one thing that's been nice. Our attendance percentages, if you click to the next slide, have steadily risen from a low of eighty-nine point three a month ago, South Carolina is the yellow one, to a high of ninety-six point five this week. So Finn actually holds the record, and it was done yesterday, with an attendance rate of ninety-eight percent for the day. I believe since we met last time, we've only had one class that's had a little cluster of cases, more than three cases. So we continue to make the recommendations, which include masking, participation in testing programs, and monitoring for symptoms. If you go to the next one, Kim, I know you asked for this data the last time, so we did have a few clusters of cases when we were here on May eleventh, and this was, the principals were kind enough to collect this data for me, and these were the numbers of students that were masked on those days, days after that Wednesday when we met. So it varies from one out of fifteen to fourteen out of fifteen. So we did have a nut, oh, a couple, maybe it was last week or the week before, we had another cluster of cases, and so the data from this case is before, prior to the notification, so there were six out of eighteen students always wearing a mask. After the notification, there were eleven students in the class for those three days, and it was nine out of eleven, ten out of eleven, and seven out of eleven the following days. That's that impression.
Clear? You understand?
Yeah. Yeah. This is a, this represents a cluster, the bottom one, like a cluster-
Those ones at the top were, when we met, when we had those eighty-nine cases in South Carolina, there were a lot of clusters of cases, where three or more were in classrooms. So those are all separate classrooms then, where there were three or more cases.
So they've all been notified too? All of the top ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Like they were probably notified prior to-
Okay.
To us.
So the one out of fifteen was also a class that was notified?
So it goes across, like the day, the twelfth, all those classes, each one of those lines is a class.
Yeah.
So on the twelfth, that was, I don't know what day it was of their notification, was just after we had asked for this data, so it was sometime after the notification, and then the thirteenth was the following day. So you can see, so when you see that, where are you looking at, the one out of fifteen?
Yeah.
The day before, there were eleven students in class and three of them were masked, one that was checked, so that doesn't mean it was throughout the whole day, but we're checked.
Right, just at that one point.
And then the next day, there were fifteen students in class, so you can make the assumption that four of those students returned and they were negative, so they could return to school. So I don't know what that's, when it was done, but that was the data that was what went through.
So the bottom?
It's a separate, that's just a separate grouping from last week or the week before.
Separate grouping, which went from eighteen to eleven.
Correct.
And of the ones that came, those eleven that came, there was a large portion that masked. So I think the first section of the graph back in May, which is when we had the larger outbreak, I think it echoes what I heard Mary Ellen saying back then at our previous meeting, that it's erratic and what you see at one point in the day could be different at a different point in the day. But, and then, you know, thank you for presenting to us at the bottom, something more recent, like in the last week or so, you know, that day one to three, you see that, when you, once people know, in this particular class, in this particular instance, they-
They, right.
But is that really the last week or so?
It was, I can't, I don't know exactly when, I can tell you on the date.
No, it was.
It's just another group.
She said recently.
It's just another group.
Yeah. Frank, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and I think, okay, so this right here is our impact report that came from this, from CIC, which is our testing source for the state. So you can see, you can see the numbers there. We have done forty-nine thousand, some odd change, tests have been collected. There, I put our positivity, our positive case chart next to theirs, because I'm not really sure where they got their data from. I had asked them, because if you're following the upper chart and the lower chart, one of our hardest weeks is when we didn't put in any tests. So they're working on that, they corrected the top numbers for me last night, and now they're working on the bottom numbers, but our actual numbers are on the right-hand side. So that's coming from the state, because as of June thirtieth, our testing program through the state is not going to exist anymore. So the medical advisor team began discussions yesterday about looking to the future, what next year might look like, so, regards to testing and what we will be looking at, because we do not have any testing in our budget right now.
But what it does show is that thankfully the accuracy of you and your team's measurement was happening, right? Because if we were only relying on the state tests, we might be thinking we were doing one way when reality shows something different, so. Now, even though we won't have budget to do the, the state-sponsored testing, has your, you and the nursing team talked about what you'll continue doing next year in terms of, we'll still have the tests in the offices, you know, like if a student comes in and reports X, Y, and Z, will you still be taking data to, you know, look at any trend, anything that's happening within the schools? It'll be light, maybe it'll be lighter in, in a sense of the volume of data you're collecting today, but-
So the testing program, as we know, which is the pool testing, symptomatic testing in the health offices, and at-home tests, which have been funded throughout the year by the state, is not going to exist. So we have, we have tests, still, the at-home, or self-tests, and at-home tests, we do still have some of those left over, I think, this is the discussion that the medical advisor team's having, like, what are we going to plan for, what's the best plan of action? Do we need to plan for a surge? I think that's what, if we had a crystal ball-
Yeah, yeah.
It would be wonderful, I think that's what CIC is reaching out to, you know, there's environmental monitoring that's being piloted, wastewater and air in different places, so there's a lot of-
Is it in Metro West already, in our towns?
No, not, the, the, CIC has just started to pilot it, I did fill out a- No, not, the, the, CIC has just started to pilot it, I did fill out a survey yesterday saying that I would, we would like to be a pilot. So I think they just have it in a few schools, and they'll have some report on that data within the next few weeks, hopefully. So it's a discussion that we're going to have, because we do need to plan for what will we do if there is a surge? What is our backup plan going to be? We do have, we will have self-tests, but like the nurse is doing it, it's more than just a nurse doing a test. We have to get a CLIA waiver, we have to have standing orders, we have to have whole new consents, because the consents that were filled out won't carry over, because it'll be a different program. So there's a lot of Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted. So, but we do have the self-tests, that we can always hand to people to test.
I have a question, Amy, does your day positive test, is that just, like, just part of this program? Not everything that you know about?
Those are all of our positive tests.
The tests, right.
Any positive that we've heard about, anything that's on our tracking sheet, not just the ones from the pool.
Oh, I see, so when you reported a positive PCR, that's also included?
Or a positive antigen test, we track those too, so.
So that's it?
This is more of a, yeah.
Those are the numbers that you find on the dashboard, those, that's there, yes. Those are our actual numbers each week, reported, ones we do, the ones that are reported to us.
Okay.
Good, sorry, thank you.
Think that's it for me, the new news of COVID.
Do we anticipate that the state is going to have more guidelines as we get closer?
No, I think the medical advisory team actually met yesterday afternoon, and we were, we were talking about, you know, again, what, how can we be proactive around whether it's a surge, or we have to have mitigation, or is it change? I think we're still in discussion. I don't anticipate the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education providing any guidelines or testing opportunities moving forward unless things change dramatically. So the conversation, as Marielle indicated, what do we need to be prepared for proactively? Thinking about what-if scenarios and making sure that whatever we do, there's a positive value add to the work we're doing.
Is there a concern that parents are probably also testing less frequently now, so are kids potentially going into school symptomatic more frequently than maybe people are testing regularly? Or a concern for next year that that will happen?
Yes, I think there's the COVID fatigue, I think there's some fatigue there. I think that people just think, oh, it's my allergies, you know, like even, you know, people that you wouldn't think would think that, certainly not like people with my allergies. We, we have access to self-tests, I mean, people can order those, they're free ones, your insurance pays for them, we have them at schools. So I think that we just really need to focus on staying home if you're sick and testing, and doing some serial testing. But, so a discussion to be had, and who knows, do you know what I mean? Like last year, we didn't have a testing program when we sat around this table in June of last year, and then come September, they had something for us. So I think it will become from DPH, not DESI probably, our guidance, so.
I think also just the, like, the importance of putting together that medical advisory team, that you guys are, like, talking all the time. I think it's just, like, a great way, like, a great way for the district to be set up so that they, so we can be proactive, right? Like, we don't have to start now, like, now that the guidance from, you know, the state is gone, we don't have to say, okay, what now? We already have that, we don't have to say what now, but we have people at the table already to discuss that, so, kudos for that.
Okay, other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Legislative update is?
So just quickly, the, as I shared, I believe, last month, the federal government has not funded universal free meals, and that will expire at the end of this month. There is a new, new legislation that's moving through right now. The House has funded a hundred and ten million dollars to fund a free meals for all, which would mean free meals for Massachusetts students for this upcoming school year. We did submit a letter on behalf of the school committee a couple months ago, and my recommendation is just another letter just advocating for this program to move forward. Keith, in his presentation around food services, will speak to that a little bit more.
Okay, we have two donations to approve. We can do them at the same time, but let me identify them separately. There's an excess in the funds raised, I mean, Eagle Scout project of eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. So to accept this, we do need to approve it. Also in your packet is a letter from Principal Valente and Lee Spignesi, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Spignees.
I'm sorry?
Spignees.
Sp, Spignees?
Spignees.
Spignees, okay, I was pronouncing it incorrectly, anyway. And it describes a donation from Nancy Gould, pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
Of an Eastham half-size cello valued at one thousand five hundred and nine dollars, and this is going to Mary School. So I will accept the motion to accept both of these donations, the eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents representing the excess funds raised from the Eagle Project, and the Eastham half-size cello valued at one thousand five hundred and nine dollars from Nancy Gould to Mary School.
So moved?
Moved by Katura, is there a second? Seconded by Kim, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all approved? All of, all, all, all?
In favor.
All in favor, thank you. And that's unanimous. So we also have an appointment to make, we discussed this at the last meeting. The school committee has, you know, has the right to appoint an ex officio member to the municipal technology committee. It's not a requirement, but it is our right, and so I'm going to accept the motion to approve Ryan O'Leary, Director of Information Technology for South Row and North Row Schools, correct? As, as the ex officio member from South Row Schools to the South Row Municipal Technology Committee. So here, so moved?
So moved.
So moved by Kamali, so I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Katura. I can do this right now, any discussion? All in favor? Curried unanimously? And we move to old business, and I think, is Keith going to be up?
Yes, we'll turn it over to Keith for our presentation on food services.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg mentioned, the free meals, which we have certainly enjoyed in the district, is going, it was a federally funded program that is going to expire on June third. But before we kind of get into some of the details of that, and certainly the work that Becky and I have done to prepare for what may be ahead, I did want to thank both Kyle Parsons and Diane Cofer. They are our food services managers, and they have endured a great deal of change, unexpectedness over the, throughout the pandemic, often short-staffed and undersupplied, not by our design or choice, but they have had to deliver for our students on a daily basis. And very rare was the interruption something that they couldn't endure. So I certainly want to give them a huge amount of kudos, as well as the cafeteria managers, for staying in frequent contact with us and making the best decisions possible for the kids. Because our participation was up, greater than it ever has in the past. The number of students that participated in the program this year, you know, far exceeded any of our prior numbers, and it certainly is due to, one, one variable was the fact that the meals were free. So that, like we said, it will expire at the end of June. This is actually quite a publicized topic, there was a Boston editorial on the topic today that I was able to read this morning, and I agree wholeheartedly. So certainly, we have seen that increased, increased participation, which I've mentioned. We've really eliminated any stigmas for those that, ones prior to COVID, qualified for a free or reduced meal. Even though we hit it as best we could, there were still things that may have been, you know, they still are on the list. And that's something that, you know, carried weight, and we want, we eliminated that while having the universal free meals. And so it also allowed our team, because the reimbursement rate was, was great, and Becky and I will talk about that a little later, we didn't have to focus on that part of it in a collection of funds. We could focus on food preparation and menu preparation, you know, for the students as best we can, because there were certainly a lot of challenges to navigate. So if we get deeper into those challenges, these are things that I have mentioned before, and certainly we've all experienced it, interpersonalized food shortages did not escape the meal program here at school. Our federal commodities were unpredictable at times, and we had to make adjustments accordingly. Delivery constraints, last-minute changes of schedules, we were expecting a bread order at 6:00 AM, but it didn't show up until 3:00 PM. Things like that occurred with a level of frequency that was challenging for, you know, Kynell and Diane to manage. And due to those, you know, food shortages and constraints, we had to make menu adjustments. Thankfully, I think we really slowed down the preparation of menus, we were doing that monthly, and in some cases, six weeks in advance, and that just wasn't possible this year. So we went down to about five months or so, we were doing a new menu every two weeks, so that we could stay, to make sure the community was informed on what to predict. So that was something that we had to do, and fortunately, in the last couple of months, we've gone back to a monthly plan, which has stabilized pretty well in the communication to families. So I do want to thank the principals, though, and the cafeteria managers, just for making sure that when it was needed, communication did get out, not only for students with allergies, but for students that didn't make, maybe didn't care for a particular menu item. We tried to get that as frequent as we could. And one of the weird things that happened is we had some items that were just unexpectedly substituted. It's kind of like if you've ever done Peapod or anything like that, it's like, I didn't order that. We had those same experiences with, with our vendors, and, you know, hopefully, our, our real hope is that in the fall, that's going to stabilize a little bit more and better as the food shortages do, do decrease. So we are anticipating, and we have heard from vendors, that it will be better, and, you know, it doesn't matter until it actually does occur. So that's that. The other thing I would add to this that has made it complicated is we participate with the different purchasing consortiums to get the lowest price possible, and the one that we work with to get us our produce didn't receive any bids. So they went out for a bid to have companies, you know, provide for their communities that are part of the consortium, and they did not get, receive any bids. So we still are going to be able to get produce, we just have to do it through some of our, our different vendors, which is just another obstacle that we're predicting for the, for the upcoming year. So that's something that we were hoping for, crossing our fingers for, and we just got that update yesterday, so it's fresh off the list.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So one of the consortiums, do you want to name, what's the name? Tech. So the Tech Collaborative goes out to bid for a variety of different types of products that we need. One of the avenues that they go out for is produce, so it'll, it'll have different markers like, you know, quantity, quality, shelf life, all those different attributes, and then companies will bid on those contracts. And if they engage in that contract, they have to deliver on that contract, and they're held accountable. So I think because of the volatility of that particular market, we didn't have any companies that were willing to put forth a bid, you know, for the consortium to consider.
This is one of the largest consortiums and collaboratives that does this type of bidding in the state, so for them not to get a bid, that speaks volumes about where we are right now in the market.
Do you think it's a price?
Availability. The cake it remains, yeah.
Maybe, right.
Claim to growth.
Yeah, and the Finn Garden might be providing for the district.
We'll have tomatoes, we'll.
Shelf life isn't. Yeah, we're all set, we'll just expand all the gardens in the district. But certainly, you know, you know, all joking aside, these types of things have been continual over the years, like we, I mean, over the past couple of years, where we have contracts with vendors, and they're supposed to provide certain items, and we'll get frequent updates that say it's just not available. So they'll give us like, you know, one to two-week advance notice that, hey, you know, these particular items are no longer going to be available, because they're, they're projections. So it's been part of the challenges that we've endured. So, as we dig into the money side of things, I do want to thank Becky and her team, and in particular, Sunny Cox. She went back many years to, to look at our food services programs, how we did, what were the ups and downs, and we did do a very deep analysis of that, and we really focused on a couple of areas. Obviously, our, our income, because it is a self-sufficient program, was something that we looked closely at. We also looked at the trends of our, our food costs, our, our labor cost, as well as things like food production, which was obviously a variable that escalated during, during COVID. But what this chart shows is some of these norms that are definitely true, the orange line is wages. So you will see that labor is one of our highest expenses, and, and we're proud to say that we are able to compensate our cafeteria workers very well, and we've retained many of them over the years because of that. The other thing you'll see is in the gray and yellow line, the two marks, and they're kind of like highlighted through a comment, is where we did have meal price increases, both in two thousand and thirteen as well as two thousand and eighteen, or nineteen, so two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. So those were the times where we kind of caught up with these trends, and now you can see from the very top right corner, this is when we're kind of lagging behind, and that's why we've spoken previously about the potential for a meal price increase. So, we did do, from some of the conversations we've had from the three committees, is looking at the local districts and seeing where we fall, and this chart does a nice job, thank you to Becky and your team for this research. It also shows that, you know, our neighbors to the south, Hopkinton, have already improved a fifty-cent increase to their meal costs for the upcoming school year, so they're going from two seventy-five to three twenty-five at their elementary schools respectfully. So we are currently a little higher than them at the three-dollar mark, but you will see a range there that is, you know, consistent with where we want to be. So, drum roll. So what we are proposing is a twenty-five cent increase to each of the meals, and the left of this chart shows that we are at three dollars for the main meal, three twenty-five currently for the deli and salad bar and adult meal is three eighty-five, and then the increase of twenty-five cents to each of those categories is represented on the right at three twenty-five, three fifty, and four ten. A couple of things I can comment on about what this does reflect is, is making sure that we do account for the salaries of our, of our staff, very critical to do that. The unpredictability of the market is certainly in play, we try to really project different variables to the best of our ability. And then if we go back to a paid lunch program, what are we going to see? So you just ask that question, and we can make some predictions, but there definitely is some unpredictability to that. Maybe students are now used to getting a meal at school, and they're not going to want to go back to a bagged lunch. There's a variety of different things, and every family is going to have to make their, make their individual choices, but. You know, the data reflected here does not really represent the deep dive that we went into. We did look into longitudinal data in a variety of different categories, and, and this was the recommendation that we were coming to the committee with for consideration. So Becky, I don't know if there's anything you want to add about the numbers or Greg?
Sure, we'll see, you, you go first and then we'll see if we're on the same page, though. I would just add that the food services program is a self-funded, self-sustained program. It's outside of the operational budget, so again, it needs to run in the black, it needs to run at a positive at the end of the year. If not, it's subsidized by the operational budget, and over the past many years in South Row, we've been running in the black, and we want that to continue moving forward.
Yeah, and I would say that we really have been, I'd say, kind of skirting, though, like, we're very close to, like, the breakeven, or maybe we make like a slight profit in South Row over the past few years. But one thing to keep in mind is that right now, for this year, our federal reimbursement rate is four dollars and fifty-six cents for a meal, which is obviously substantially higher, so we have been able to, given all of the variables that we've had, we've kind of been able to sustain some of the hits that we had to take, and maybe some of the higher costs that have been absorbed, so that this is going to be helpful for us if this situation continues to have the increase, because if we remain where we are, it could really be damaging to that revolving account.
Question. Although we're the elementary level, in the graph that's on, I don't know if you can do this, but the line graph, we talk about the high school, what? What, and then in the proposal, could you tell me a little bit about what what the proposal is for the high school? The reason why I ask is that line item about adult meal. In my mind, I feel like that portion of size, like, okay, that's the height, the older children are going to be like getting the adult meal. But maybe it's just the verbiage there. Maybe it's larger portion of the meal, yeah.
Correct. And and currently, they are at a, you know, minimal increase number over the $3. And we will be reviewing that with the regional committee next week.
So when we had this initial discussion a month ago, or two months ago, whatever it was, and I think I I had in my mind that we were going to need to charge what we're getting reimbursed by the federal. So I was a little nervous about what kind of increase we would have to do in order to stay in the black. I mean, I think a 25 cent increase, if that's necessary to operate the program, and the last increase was four years ago. To me, that seems completely reasonable, and if the price is still within the realm of, I mean, I, I, you know, the way everything else is going up these days, that doesn't seem, it, to me, that seems reasonable. And I appreciate all this background information about how it's all kind of trended over time. And you can just see how that happens. It's just, it's what it is in a way. So thank you. That's a very good presentation. I I feel that this is, seems reasonable to me. And I I did the math. If I'm doing it right, it's like an 8% increase. So it's not, it's not a crazy percentage, considering the last one was several years ago.
Kim.
The, this projection, is it based on the same participation as this year, or lower?
We actually did go back. We looked pre-pandemic.
Okay.
We tried to come up with a a nice average so that we can make our projections based on that.
And do we have a little, is there a balance in the revolving account that's like significant, or?
There is a balance in the revolving account as of right now. And so that will help to, say, you know, any.
Oopsie.
Yes.
So I think it's important to note that we're we're returning to normal next year potentially.
Yeah.
And that there are a lot of unknowns, participation, food costs, and so forth. We do feel like a 25 cent increase in the the balance we have currently in the revolving account for food services will allow us to kind of observe and watch, and then determine if, you know, we need to come back to the committee and say, you know, 25 cents wasn't enough. We need a larger increase.
I have another question. I do actually think 25 cents is very reasonable. And I think, I don't think that, I really don't think there'll be much pushback either. Like, it doesn't, I don't think it'll be fine. All agree. But my question is, a few years ago, with the parents, sort of like, they were having conversations with, I think, Kyle, I think it was Kyle, about like, what the food was. And I think that the consortium was sort of like the hindrance to that. Like, we have to buy kind of what is offered through this buying group, and we can't really go outside of that. So I'm wondering if, one, it's an opportunity, maybe, if we're not, if we have to go outside of that buying group to like, look at other things. And then also, if the state approves it, assuming it'll be a higher reimbursement rate, also an opportunity to sort of like, look at the overall, like.
Content.
I hate to say quality, but that's what I mean, you know? And I don't mean that there's no quality, but like, the quality of the food and where it's sourced and that kind of thing. So I guess it's more just a comment. Like, can we take that, those opportunities?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I perceive, you know, we have a, this has got to be such a difficult, difficult situation to to balance, because you're balancing the economics, you know, with food quality. But I perceive that if you go outside the consortium, that would change the economics a bit. Am I incorrect in that, I mean, or not? I mean, not necessarily with just one thing, but is that an unwarranted assumption on my part?
I think that, Keith, feel free to add. I think that there's a lot of opportunity to look at the nutritional value of the food we're providing students. I think the work that Mary Ellen is doing, and it's an opportunity to provide students with education around the choices they're making. And I think there are opportunities to increase the quality of the food and how we're preparing it. So I think those are discussions we actually were having pre-PM.
Right.
I think through Mary Ellen working in partnership with Keith and Kyle Parsons, really looking at, you know, what can we do differently? Can we scratch a cookie more? How can we use the food that we are getting? Truly thinking about, you know, what are we providing students? And students should have a voice, and have a point and feedback around.
Yeah, that seems very important.
What what they would like to see.
I.
Just, I also think 25 cents is is very reasonable. I looked at the, looked at the chart where, you know, in in this presentation of a local district, there are 10 other schools. Looking at the middle school, there are only four other schools that charge less than in Southboro, and those are 25 cents less. And the rest of them all charge more than we do. So based on the fact that we don't see what is going to happen with those other schools, I would say that it's almost impossible to believe that you're not going to see increases across the board. And even at the elementary level, there are still only four schools out of the 10 other schools that are that are less than Southboro. And that's also only 25 cents less. So we're in the, you know, we're still in the low end, if you will, of what we charge compared to our overall district, and will be, you know.
Which also could present another opportunity, right? Like, as we have, like, things settle down and like, look more at that, like, there might be room to like, spend more.
I think the question too.
Spend more or charge more?
I think the question too is what are, what are the consumers willing to pay for, for higher quality product? So it's not always, what's the lowest price? But, you know, if if we add another increase, what is the product, like, that we're delivering to our our students? So I think there's that conversation, which we've not had.
Right.
And I think we need time to recalibrate, settle in, and then get some data, and then have those conversations moving forward.
And there's a lot of research already about, you know, like, you know, the food has to be like something that the kids will eat, right? And like, how do we do that? Like, you know, how how can we be more efficient? Like, I sat through a TED Talk-ish, where they made suggestions, like, as people retire, you replace them with a professional chef. And like, the food tastes better sometimes. And like, the, they, professional chefs, like, were able to use more of the food. So like, they saved money that way. It was fascinating. So I think there's like lots of opportunity to sort of, you know, learn.
Will there be any change in the, I assume not, right? And the, who qualifies for a reduced lunch now with the increase?
There has been discussion, so, you know, that that threshold for that will be adjusted, depending upon what Massachusetts decides to do with the universal free plan. So we have heard that, but we haven't seen any projections. So typically, by now, I already have the chart, which the principals know about, and the letters, ready to send out to families for the start of the year, for them to consider applying for free and reduced lunch. Those have not been prepared yet. So I think there is this general holding, you know, onto the fact that, you know, the advocacy and the lobbying will go to the point where, you know, we don't have to have this discussion, you know? Because right now, our free and reduced lunch applications have, you know, reduced significantly. However, we have had, and Mary Ellen and I have had this discussion frequently, we do, still do have families, though, applying for assistance through state programs in the Department of Transition Assistance, which we now, used to get updates quarterly, or even less, or even twice a year. We are now doing that update monthly. So we make sure that we're supporting those families properly in the school district. And now it's actually more of a requirement that we do that type of level of review.
That's great.
That is great.
Okay, so as as we've heard, as we know, it's managed through revolving fund. Do you understand that? Does anybody have any specific questions on that, or we can? All right. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
And we are now moving to the master.
Do we need to vote?
Oh, we do need to vote. You're correct. So I would, if I if I mistake, if I mistake this, I'm going to correct me, but I would like, I would entertain a motion to increase the price of school lunches from $3 to $3.25.
Lunch, like, just 25 cents across the board, right?
Correct. For the three different, for the three different categories.
Do we need to vote on each category?
No. Yeah.
If I can do it.
Yeah, I'd probably do the main meal, $3.25, $3.25, yeah, do the three categories.
Okay. So let's, let's, so this, I entertain a motion for the element, well, where are we dealing with? Are we dealing with each category?
Made main.
Yeah.
Each level.
All right, so we need to do it for each meal. All right, so for the main meal, I entertain a motion to increase the price from $3 to $3.25. Is there a motion?
Put the ball together.
That's reasonable.
And, well, lump the ball together as one motion. And increase the deli salad meal from $3.25, by 25 cents to $3.50. And increase the adult meal from $3.25, by 25 cents, to $4.10.
So moved. So moved, right?
And if you make that motion, I want you to repeat the whole thing. All right. Moved by Katara, seconded by Kim. Any discussion?
Yes.
Um, I, I just want to acknowledge that this is going to be challenging for people, especially when you multiply that by day, by three to four children, or more, if you have them. That's a lot. And so, you know, there's alternative choices that parents and families will have to make in terms of like, okay, bringing your own, et cetera, et cetera. But I think just like, from a fiscal point of view, I understand the logic that this hasn't moved in four to five years. What we'll have to be cognizant of is that we kind of need to stay here for a while as well. And if there's new changes in legislation and laws that say, yes, we do have free, you know, there's some sort of supplement, or stipend, or the free lunches for all actually gets approved, then I think that it should be revisited, and the opportunities that Kim you raised about, okay, so now we have this governmental supplement, then how can we make the quality for the, what we're paying, you know, better, more enticing, et cetera? So I just, I feel the burden. I'm going to have to make some choices, because each day, times three people, for nine months, is a lot. And from the meals, they're only taking a portion of those items. So that's, that's what I wanted to add to the discussion.
I think those are good points. Other comments?
It's $45. Per student.
Per student, for the year.
For the year.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. Go to master plan update.
Oh, wait, pizza differs. Do we have an update on pizza differs?
If we can get them.
Okay.
It's on the next slide.
And lobster rolls, and baked Alaska, and everything else. No, I'm joking. It's the availability.
So we've had the master plan on the agenda, and discussed it a couple of times throughout the year. I think this will be the last time we have it on the agenda. Katara, would you like to say anything about this?
Well, so we, there was a, the school section was circulated prior to the meeting. And there was some feedback to it, which was put into a new document, which was then circulated. And so we have a sort of a final redlined draft section. I want to thank people for their input. I also would like to thank Sam Stivers for drafting the original.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much, the original version. And I think this is reflective of some plots of thought and collaboration as far as sort of thinking more broadly about the schools and the way, you know, sort of areas, avenues of exploration that we can look at as the years go on. And we sort of return to some normalcy, hopefully, and have that sort of availability to do that as we move forward. So my understanding is that everybody has received this. I don't know if there are any comments or additional changes to it, but that's where we are.
So just to, just to add a minute or so, this is not something we vote on. It's something that we all reviewed. This, this new master plan for Southboro is really an update from a plan that I'm, am I correct? It's 2008, if I'm right?
Yeah.
Initially, I was the liaison from the school committee to that master plan committee. And I'm probably exaggerating a bit, but not much. In the last plan, schools had two or three sentences entirely to describe the schools' part of the master plan. And Katara acknowledged select board member Stivers as as really helping a lot in getting that changed. Also, the district with its strategic plan was also very involved in that. And so I think from where we came to what we have now is is more than just significant. So I'm just going to close by thanking Katara, because when I was involved, we had three sentences. And since Katara has actually become the liaison, it it grew geometrically.
Well, I will actually throw that back at Roger and say thank you for your initial work, because.
I got Sam involved.
A good, well, and a good section of what's in there now came from you brainstorming with Sam and what you came up with in the early days. And so thank you for your work on it, too.
I think it's, I think it looks pretty good. And I think we can be, we can be proud to have that, you know, represented as our, as our part of the plan.
I have a question.
Please.
The master plan, what's the, the term that is, does it have?
It's more, so previously, it was more of a tenure plan, and now it's more of a evolving.
Ongoing.
Yes, and it will just be revisited. And there is a section, it's not on this, but there's an implementation section, which for every section of the plan, various committees are charged with, maybe, you know, sort of follow-up. And for this, it's just a school committee all the way down. So I think it's the kind of thing where as time goes on, you can pick a, an item and look at it, and, you know.
I think really important, because the strategic plan process is so good. It's just, we know exactly, like, if something's going to pop in, it'll pop in and move its way through. So, um, should we?
And you know what's, you know what's interesting about a master, about a master plan? If anyone's, if people have looked at them, things move at different rates. Things, things don't all move forward at the same time.
Right.
And so certain things get out of date.
Or ever.
Long before, or ever, fair enough, long before other. But you can't keep updating the plan every year. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's an effort. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, should we give Katara, like, the run with it?
She's going to run with it.
Yeah, like, we're all done.
Yes, yeah. So I will submit this. So I, you know, and this is also a good opportunity to just acknowledge the people on the master plan committee who put so much time into the town's master plan. on the master plan committee who put so much time into the town's master plan, which really will benefit us all as residents of the town. So I will submit this to them. It'll just be put in and be part of the plan.
And if there's any changes, like you just do it for us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before and after school care update, program update. Since to a boy.
Yeah.
Top up, all right. So yes, I do have an update for the committee tonight about the extended day program, South Borough Extended Day Program. Overall, we are very much on track. Carrie Packer, the program director, is closing out this year on a high note. In fact, the current SEDP is holding an end of year celebration, which was supposed to be tomorrow. Correct, Principal Ryan?
That's right.
But it was postponed to later in the month and will now coincide with a recreation department event. So I think that was a smart decision. A lot of things unfortunately had to be canceled or postponed for tomorrow. So I congratulate Carrie and her work to be flexible with that. And also for the end of year stuff, you know, Carrie is not only trying to end things well for the program in its current state, but she's also trying to be planful for what's ahead. The key area of update that I want to provide you today is with the human resources department. Huge amount of gratitude towards Heather Richards and her team, as well as the finance team for really looking at and making sure that the transition went as smooth as possible. As you can imagine, two separate organizations, two different ways of operating. We have different policies that we have to follow. There were things that we had to adjust and make sure it fit well, and we've been able to do that. It took a little longer than expected. It wasn't simply moving from one column to another. There needed to be some thoughtful adjustments. So the team really had to dig into that and do well. And in the course of that, it created a little bit of a delay and some frustration on some. So we did communicate that out. We've had conversations with existing staff and making sure that they felt valued and we were going to get them on board as soon as we possibly can. So for those that are interested in continuing with the program, that door is officially open. So we continue to go through a posting, a series of posting for the positions, and we're working as quickly as we can to fill them. So that has been a very critical part of our work, certainly in the last month or so. In conjunction with that, the enrollment of the program is doing well. It's kind of trickling in as people's plans adjust or become, you know, available for the summer. Our summer program is actually a little higher than it was last year. So we're at a current enrollment of thirty-seven for the upcoming summer, which will start, you know, right, right at the end of June. And then looking forward to the fall, Carrie was able to connect with all existing families to make sure that they secured their seats for the upcoming school year. And our outreach through the support of the principals has been done to all the different schools to add new families into the program. And that is going to be an ongoing rolling basis. And I'll certainly be able to provide the committee with an update in September on where we fall. So those are the major updates that I have, and it is ongoing, working daily. I think Becky had a conversation with Carrie today about some of the, you know, software that we use for the program and making sure that, you know, that transition is going well. So we're on track. I think that's the overall message I want to make sure that you all were aware of. And that as things adjust, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, any more new hires, like, or shifting that she, that Carrie has done in terms of supporting the whole program? Or just everyone that's already staffed will be disseminated?
As many, as many people that would like to retain their position or apply for maybe a higher level are welcome to do so. And we're going through that process with Carrie. She is a member of all those hiring committees and working closely with HR to get those done. So anyone that is presently employed by SEDP obviously has a huge advantage for securing a position moving forward.
Is there like a, I don't know, like a legal cut over, turnover date? Like where there, like previous healthcare is now, you know, the district's...
They are district employees as of July 1, 2022.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes.
Really just, really new employees. They're all just new employees.
That's right.
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Please.
Two quick questions, actually. I saw, on the personnel report, it talks about you have two new site coordinators.
Correct.
Is that it? Or do, are you still, we need to hire one?
We need to hire one more.
Okay. And for the families that are currently participating and doing a big percentage?
Yes.
Do you know, going on like a job?
I would say so. I mean, I would say for those that have their plans worked out for the fall.
Yes, right, right.
Yes. And who wanted, who wanted to retain their seat or add a sibling? All that is complete.
Okay, perfect.
With a high rate of turnover.
Okay. And then, so I know it's not time yet, but we're not going to meet again until it's past time.
We're meeting next week.
I'd say, oh, next week, Greg.
No. So I'm just thinking about the integration with the extended day program and student support services and like the sort of how that will flow. And if we have information on the kids that are already signed up, like, do we know how many have supported? You know, like, I know those questions are going to get answered between now and when we meet again in September. But I guess my comment is just like that's...
Make sure it happens?
Yeah, make sure it happens because I think like that is like one of the super bonuses for this program coming in-house.
I agree, and I think that that transfer of information will be a lot smoother and available due to the fact that Carrie is now, well, will be employee of the district in about twenty days.
Yes.
Yes.
And so like just the flow of like how we find out that information, you know, like, do we have a checkbox on all forms and, you know, sort of like, not just like big picture, but like logistically, are we...
Down to, down to the detail. Well, since, you know...
But again, not now.
She can't really work for us yet. Although the plan is to do that type of preparation, you know, as soon as the summer gets started. And Carrie and I have forecasted that as soon as we can kind of get settled into the summer, we're going to be sitting down and I'll certainly be talking to Marie and her team about a good transfer of information.
Awesome. In that pro care system that we use, we do have the ability to kind of have categories for students. So like allergies or, you know, some sort of, you know, illness we can classify now, but then we can also pick our own category. So if we wanted to put like a student who has a 504 combination or an IEP, we could classify.
You know, like information that would be helpful.
Would be helpful.
Yeah. Awesome, thanks.
Welcome. Good?
Yeah.
All right, we move to the superintendent's report.
Should we let everybody go?
And thank you.
I think we should let Mr. Mucci go.
Mr. Mucci, he's like, I'm gone, right.
Does Principal Valente get to go twice?
Yes. Yes, no, it's the will of the committee. I would support allowing principals to enjoy the South Borough game.
Yeah, that's right, so, yeah.
Twelve minutes. Who's counting?
Who's counting?
Thank you, everybody. Have a good summer.
Thank you very much. Have a good summer.
Thank you so much. Have a great summer, yeah.
Bye, Steve.
If you don't mind, I'm going to say a quick question.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Very kind of you.
I just wanted to see it up.
Steve's social media people, that's...
You should work on discussing a definition of a novelette.
Just be careful, someday there might be a time where he's reading your report. All right, so on to the superintendent's report. So in your packet is the enrollment report as of June 1, 2022. And we continue to monitor enrollments closely. Typically, we have new enrollments, a good sense of who's moving into the community. What we don't have at this time of the year is usually who's leaving. So the admin assistants are working closely with families. Any withdrawals that are anticipated, make sure that it's communicated to us in time of year. And in particular, Clayton is monitoring the kindergarten enrollment very closely as, you know, we are close to the class size cap. So we'll watch that. And if we feel like we're getting to a place where we need to add another section of kindergarten, I'll work through Roger and talk a little how to move forward in that process. But here this evening, we also have Jennifer Henry, who is the early childhood coordinator for the district. Jennifer does an amazing job with our preschool program and is an integral part of this school. And she's going to share a little bit about the program and also speak to our South Borough kindergarten assistants. So welcome, Jennifer.
So just to start off with a little bit of information about our preschool program, we really try to provide a rich learning environment for all of our students. So in preschool, we have a very wide range of learning profiles, learning abilities, including children with special needs, children without special needs, EL students. And we really work hard to meet the needs of all of those students. With that is, one of our fundamental beliefs at preschool is that all students can really learn and develop, given the right supports and frequently different individualized supports across the school day. Our preschool is comprised of inclusive classrooms that are really dedicated to ensuring that all children, regardless of their learning profiles or learning challenges, can learn and develop in a caring, supportive, developmentally appropriate environment. And our preschool has highly qualified staff. And we really utilize a multidisciplinary team approach at the preschool, as well as flexible learning models, which really allows us to individualize programming for students based on whatever they need to access the preschool curriculum across the school day. So if you were to visit our classrooms in the preschool, what you would see is a very language-rich curriculum. So we have a lot of visuals around the room, a lot of language is being used, visuals to correspond to that language. A very multisensory developmental approach to learning. So you don't, or hopefully don't see a lot of sitting around and things like that. But they're up, you know, doing movement activities, some video technology usage, as well as very hands-on approach to learning. It was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but we really take a total child, full child approach to learning and really seek to help children develop their skills across all developmental domains. And we also have a very strong commitment to helping children develop their self-respect, positive peer relationships, emotional regulation skills, social-emotional learning skills, and friendships based upon mutual respect. So you would see all those things happening in the classroom. With regards to our models, so we have six integrated preschool classrooms. And each of those classrooms is led by a teacher who's duly certified in early childhood pre-K to two, as well as special needs. So either moderate or severe nature. In addition to those six integrated preschool classrooms, we also have a specialized instruction classroom for children who require a portion of their day to include one-to-one highly systematic individualized instruction, primarily based on principles and procedures of applied behavioral analysis, and/or some highly structured small group learning opportunities. And students across the day participate in that individualized classroom and get their programming from that classroom based upon whatever their needs are. So some children might be in there for, you know, a small portion of the day. Others may be in there for longer, just based on their learning needs and profiles, and whatever their IEP team has determined. We also have related service providers who deliver therapy. So there are a lot of different service providers, and they deliver that therapy in or out of the classroom based upon individual student IEP teams and what those teams have determined is most meaningful for the child to make progress. So with regards to schedules, we have a variety of different schedules at the preschool. Firstly, we have students who pay tuition to attend preschool. So those are students who are not recommended for preschool classroom participation through the IEP process. And we have five full-day classrooms, four full-day classrooms, and four half-day, both morning and afternoon sessions that are available to families. For special education students, so those are students who are recommended for preschool classroom through the IEP process, we have 4.5 full-day classrooms. Children who are recommended for 4.5 full-day preschool classrooms typically are working on skills across local developmental domains and really require very specialized intensive instruction for a portion of their day. And then we have four half-day classrooms, which again, we have morning sessions and afternoon sessions. So a lot of different options in how to participate in preschool, as well as different schedules and what a schedule looks like for any child at the preschool is highly customized based on their needs. So with regards to enrollment numbers, so these are our current enrollment numbers for the 22, 23 school year. Tuition, with regards to tuition-paying students, there are 43. For special education students, there are currently 10. Although I will say, we still are in the process of evaluating and holding meetings. So that changes across the year quite frequently with tuition. So the total students would be 53 for South Borough. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
I have one on 4.5...
Full day.
Yep. No.
What is that?
So that means that Monday through Thursday, they're there for a full day, 8:30 to 2:30. Friday is a half a day. Depends on the classroom assignments. They're staggered, and that is, allows us time for consultation for all service providers to meet and talk about individual students and have team meetings.
Thank you.
This was really good, thank you. And one question that I have is around playtime. So we talked about the breakdown in the classroom. Can you describe what their outside time is like in terms of togetherness? If we, you know, is there opportunity that this will be separated by the classes? Or is it that twen- half, you know, two classes are outside at the same time? And, yeah, three classes or all of them, all 53, I don't know.
It's a combination of a little bit of everything. So there are times that the entire preschool might be outside. That's not an everyday occurrence. Primarily, we have a schedule that's based on a lot of different variables. And so generally speaking, two or three preschool classrooms might be out at the same time.
Any questions?
Yeah. That was great, thank you. And I have a couple of questions. The 53, is that, how many slots are, like, if you're fully booked? Like, is 53 kind of like what you would expect at this time? Or is it low or high or...
I would say it's about what we typically would expect to start with. We know going into a school year that we will be adding students as they turn three, if their teams find them eligible. But with that being said, we still have room for growth. We've made some changes about how we assign children to different classrooms to allow us more flexibility because the numbers are very... But we still have plenty of room.
Yeah, 10 totally seems low to me, but that's probably not going to last for very long, the 10.
It could change by the end of the year.
Right. And I also wanted to point out, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fact that all classrooms have dual-certified teachers is kind of not necessarily normal, right? Like, it's, do all, do preschools, I've heard that that is like, like a great attribute of our program.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
It is not a legal mandate that they all have dual-certified teachers. There are districts where that is the preference, but it is very important to our district.
Okay. So just wanted to point that out. And do we have any students that spend 100% of their time in that...
Individualized?
Individualized, that, what is it called again? The individualized... The individualized classroom?
Individualized instruction classroom. We do not currently have any students that spend 100% of their time there. It is very important to us, research supports, and it's very important to our district to have inclusion. And we know that that helps students no matter what their learning profile is. So we try.
Try not to.
To have some meaningful inclusion for all of our students. But you know, that's based on the team process.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment about the school fair that was held for the incoming preschoolers. I thought that was a really great idea. So kudos to you for that.
It was great.
And just seeing all of the participants. So if this is just year one, it's only going to be, you know, continue and get better. So I just wanted to tell you that that was a great opportunity. I mean, I met, I feel like I'm a seasoned resident, but just to meet new residents that, like, so you're new to town, you have your small children, and maybe for someone like me to kind of just approach them and say, oh, hi. And this has been my experience with the school system, right? And then encourage them that this is, this is typical, right? To see that the children are playing and all the staff that was there supportive. It wasn't atypical. So I did have that opportunity. And I'm looking forward to more things like that. So it was, it was great. The weather, you know, you ordered great weather that day, so thank you for that.
No, thank you. That, that has actually been a desire of mine for three years. It was planned and then COVID happened, so clearly we didn't have one. But the goal of that, for people who don't know, really was to share information with the community about community resources, resources that exist for a family. So we had 14 community providers that came to share information. They set up little tables and, you know, shared their information. Those resources were, were resources that children with disabilities might be seeking out, as well as resources that, you know, children without disabilities would want. It was great. We had high school volunteers from Mount Bonquin that came down and manned our children activities. So face painting, the art club came and did face painting. And they were a little, they were cutting it a little close to the start time. And then they said, we're looking for the art club. I'm like, well, this is the early childhood fair. And they said, no, no, we, we mean the art club. We're here to volunteer. I said, oh, great, because we need people at the face painting. And I can't face paint, so. But it was great. And I had several families say, you know, how helpful it was. Some of the resources we had, they were unaware of existence.
It's great.
It's great.
Good job.
From this first event, I, I know that, so I, I have one, that's one of my children that will be entering the preschool age group. But what I saw is that, you know, each person, each parent that attended is going to tell another parent. So next year you'll, you know, or, or three. So next year you're going to see more participation. But what we were, I think collectively as parents doing, the ones that are entering, we were also saying, this is your new school. Like it was also an introductory moment and to help kind of lessen any apprehension. They may think that it's going to be fun like that with hula hoops every day. So that, that was.
It's a different sort of fun.
Yeah. So it's, it serves multi-purposes. So it was great. Thank you.
The only thing I would like to add is, Jennifer, you also had some preschool teachers who volunteered their time or were at, at the fair. So just want to acknowledge their time and effort in being at the event.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, and Clayton, feel free to stay for the rest of my report. Actually, I'm going, yeah, turn it over to Rebecca Pellegrino, who will provide the FY22 monthly general fund expenditure report, the grants update, and the facilities rental revolving fund account report.
And I can't believe Clayton does not want to stay for this. So we are now in the final months of fiscal year 2022. I can't believe it. So we're counting down the days now. The monthly general fund report that is in your packet is dated May 31st, 2022. And it does show a balance of $127,505 or 0.59% remaining. At the same time, last year, we had $386,978 or 1.82% remaining. The finance team is working with all of the schools and the departments to close out any open purchase orders and to finalize any purchases that are being made in FY22. And Pam Hite, our South Borough financial coordinator, has actually just completed one of the biggest, if not the biggest payroll of the fiscal year. So I appreciate all her efforts in that as we wind things down. And we are in a strong position to close out the fiscal year. We've also started to begin our work on fiscal year 23, where we have opened it up now for schools and departments to start to enter in their purchase orders as we start to plan for school opening in August or September. So at this point in time, I don't have any thanks out with the monthly general fund report.
So why don't we take a vote on this before you go to the other two items? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the South Borough Public School District Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of May 31st, 2022 until August. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Katura, seconded by Kamali. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous? Back to Ms. Pellegrino.
So in terms of the grant expenditures, we have the SR2 and the SR3 that we have been reporting on. So for the SR2, as you can see, we did complete the professional development. And that is the E$1,000 professional development line. And that actually involves the work that Mr. Hushak was talking about earlier. And that is the world of difference professional development that did occur here at Trotier. We also, if you want to move to the next slide, previously I had reported that we had purchased some EL curriculum for the elementary schools. And I'm also pleased to announce that we have now moved forward with the curriculum for the middle school as well. So those funds have been encumbered as we order those materials for Trotier. In terms of SR3, we really have not had any movement on SR3 over the past, since I last reported last month. But you can see, as of the $281,464 remaining, we have expended just over $21,000 of those funds. And with the SR2, we have until 9/30 of 2023 to expend. And SR3 is 9/30 2024. So we still have two years remaining on the SR3 grants. For the facility rental revolving account, as you can see, we did start the beginning of the fiscal year with a balance of $377,532. Our revenues for this year came from three main sources. And that is Asset Valley Collaborative. They do rent space at Woodward and also here at Trotier. Also the central office rent, that is the regional portion and also North Rose portion of the rental of the space at Neri. And then also the SEDP rent. So as of May 31st, we had collected just over $82,000 in rental receipts. Our expenses for the year, the bulk of it was really the work that we did here at Trotier when we had the electric panel issue last fall. We've also done some repairs for radiators and heating at, in Trotier. And then finally, we did replace the hot water heater. I think that was on February vacation that we did that at Neri. So our expenses were just over $89,000, leaving us with a fund balance as of May 31st of $371,540.
So I have any further questions? Okay, my first question, not in order of priority, is the SEDP rental, rent line says $33,000. I thought that was about $80,000 annually. So is that because, is it, what's the discrepancy to date, I guess?
So what we talked about with the town was, once we decided to take SEDP under the district's control, if you will, we actually established a new account for the extended day program. And we knew that we were going to need some funds to get that initially started. We've been paying for our carry. We've had some other expenditures. So we did start to deposit the rent checks into that account so that we could start to see the program as it was beginning because we knew we were not going to be receiving revenues until after July 1st.
So the 80,000 was or will be paid. And the 33,000 is what came in before. You made that change.
Exactly. And that was done in consultation with both the town treasurer and the town accountant. You know, and I will also point out that we are planning in July to begin a paving project at Finn. And that is approximately $143,000. So those funds will come out of this revolving account as well.
Katura?
Yeah, so I was just going to ask about that, actually. So do we have two paving projects? Are we doing just Finn and then next is Trotier or?
So we had.
To be determined.
I think originally we had.
Just trying to remember the category.
We had two phases. Yeah, so we had two phases. We had the front parking lot at Finn.
Yeah. Oh, in the back.
So what we did was we combined the two into a single project.
Yeah, so I was going to say, this seems pretty, I, we're going to be running that down a little because it's not going to be replenished as much, right? Because of the projects that it's going to be out of.
So we have also, Greg and I have had conversations with Asset Valley Collaborative because they are currently paying $4,000 for each of their two locations. So we've had conversations where we will be increasing the amount that, we have not seen an increase in that rent I, for as long as they've been, I think, in the district. So it's, it's better reflective of what, like, the North Borough region paid for the central office, where we have a calculation and they'll be paying that same amount.
So I thought I understood, but now I'm not sure I did, about the, the SEDP rent. So if I looked at the Trotier accounts now, where is the other half or that are about, where's the other portion of this sit? Because, because this is the part, this is the first part that came in before. Yes, okay, so where would I, where do I find that?
So we have started a revolving account that is specifically for.
A new revolving account.
Yes, yes.
Understood.
Can we get, can we add that to the monthly report? And when we meet again in September, can we get, get sort of like the activity, like in that, since, since the switch over? Right, so then see everything.
It's just a line, just a line item we're asking for or like a new?
So it'll be like this facility, right? It'll be like the extended day revolving.
It's going to be a far more complex.
It will be similar, sorry. It will be similar. We're going to be setting up like a budget report for them. So there'll be different expenses. There'll be salaries that will be involved, so it will be a little bit more complex.
We can give you, I think, a high level of view.
Well, I get it. I mean, this is a, this is the facility rental revolving account. And this is kind of what we're starting with.
No.
No, no, this is what we're starting with. The facility rental revolving. Kind of well, it's going to, in other words, getting balance as of last year. And then this is kind of where we, where we are before we close out this year. But that's going to be a separate revolving.
I think the three revolving accounts that we will have, we'll have the facility rental revolving fund, which is your, what you're saying here. We have the cafeteria revolving account, which we, again, operate the food services. And then we'll have the for and after-school spending day revolving account. Those are the three revolving accounts that we can report out. But I just will share that the food services and for and after-school revolving accounts include many line items because it's a complex budget. So we can, we can report out, report out big picture and.
Yeah, the facility rental won't be too complex.
This is, this is as simple as it gets.
And you, did you want to speak?
But I think that's fine.
Yeah, it is fine.
You have this more complexity. I think that's fine.
So did you want to speak to the Asset Valley Collaborative?
Yeah, so I think that we are anticipating collecting. Basically, what we did was with Keith and Becky, we did a facilities rental analysis of what we're charging for rental per square footage. And we went through and we made sure there was parity, like all the spaces that we're renting in all the organizations. And as a result, there was a adjustment to the Asset Valley Collaborative rental fee for the space that they're using at Woodward and Trotier. So we will be seeing an increase in our rent. I think we said it's about $28,000, so a $12,000 increase.
For the year.
It goes, it goes to 20.
That, if they can do that or?
Yes, the board voted to approve that increase.
It's going from eight to 20.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So like food services, does that have like a, a charge for, for rental, for like the space that they use? No? Okay.
Now, 25% in temp price.
No, right, I just didn't know.
Good as very hard. No, it does not.
Thank you.
Still, still with you, I think?
Yeah, so the last update on the superintendent's report is Neri Building Committee update. So we have Denise Eddy, who is, has been appointed as a new member. And she has a wealth of experience. She's an attorney. But more importantly, she's served 15 years on the Ashland School Committee, five years as the chair. And she has served on the town of Ashland's building project committees, a various number of committees. So she brings a wealth of practical and pragmatic experience as a school committee member, as a, as a board member.
As I said, select board appointment, but I think it has particular interest to us. Okay, I think it's a great appointment. All right, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Educational policy, none at this time. Policy development distribution, none at this time. Personnel items, I'm ordering the packet.
Yeah, I'll just note quickly that, you know, the human resources department has done an excellent job, as well as principals, on getting ahead of the hiring of positions for the upcoming academic year. So we've had great success and we are welcoming a number of new hires to our organization. We're very excited.
Can I, can I ask, are any of those like diverse hires or have, you know, have we done any work in terms of trying to get them more?
Yeah, so I think some of the hires that we're looking at, Kaifa, the L program, we're still not seeing that there are diverse candidates applying. But it's something we are trying to recruit and advocate for. And I can, I can run, I can have a report in the fall too around, you know, kind of the demographics of the hires.
And I don't know if, from the equity audit, if they were able to give any like suggestions or recommendations on how to kind of expand or improve on those hiring practices to bring a more diverse candidate group.
Yeah, I was thinking the, the pool, like how, like our efforts to increase the diversity of our pool, right? The first step for, for the hire. But I think Heather at one point said that she needed software. Like this change in software was going to make it easier for her to sort of track that, like the pool.
Yeah, I think, I think we could put it on as an agenda item because there are a lot of strategies that we're wanting to try to recruit a different, diverse, a more diverse applicant pool. We've joined a few organizations. We changed the way we advertise and how we advertise. There are a lot of tangible things that we're, we're putting into place. And I think it would be great to report those, those actions to the committee, whether they result in diverse workforce.
Yes, right.
We're, we're still waiting to see.
The first, right, first step.
The first, right, first step.
So that is the personnel report.
Communications.
Yeah, so just a quick update. So I think the key update from the last time we met, we were evaluating Parents Square as the unified communication to the districts that will replace One Call. And we have moved forward with that purchase. So as of August first, our unified communication will be Parents Square. We think it is much more user-friendly and user-centric. It will allow us to really streamline our communications and give the customer, parents, families more options around how they receive communications. So we will be providing professional development, videos, information to parents as we kind of launch this, the second.
Are you opening it to, like, the district will use it? Will the teachers have access to it?
So next year, this will just be the unified communication.
Just the district, so one call, basically.
From, from the central, central office to principals and support organizations. Like at.
Okay, and so like, so that's like what they would have access to it. I don't know where I was, that we saw, oh, one of the groups that saw sort of like the beta of Parents Square and it was excellent. I think it's gonna be like a, I think it's gonna be well perceived. So appreciate that.
And that is the communication update.
Website. That's next.
Yeah, so the website, August first, we're on target for kind of rebranding our, our website, making it more user-friendly and more accessible. So Julie Doyle, working with Jennifer Tracy, is in that, is undergoing that process. And we are on target for a August first launch.
So I think, I think I sent out, right, the copy of the compliance in state on the website, through all of you?
The OCR.
Yeah.
The OCR, I'm sorry, the OCR.
Yeah, so two thousand and fourteen, there was an OCR complaint around website accessibility. So that's been open for eight years. So this past fall, we worked closely with the OCR's attorneys and we were able to finalize equation of, of the expectations of that year. So that is closed. However, the accessibility work is never completed.
Yeah, the fact, the fact that it's closed doesn't mean exactly.
Right, and so, and I, on that, I think what Roger sent out had said, like, you know, this, they like accessed like the most active. So do we have sort of a plan, like, or, or is it part of the the platform that it, you know, like that we don't have to sort of think about it or?
It's a combination. It's part of the platform. It's training educators around how to post and what to post. It's, you know, we also have tools that we scan our websites every night for accessibility issues. So it's multifaceted.
If the school committee wants to update their page, which we talked about Roger, like the, who, like, how would we do that?
We can schedule a time with Jen Tracy.
Okay, it's just tax. So you talked about like some of the, what a school committee is.
That would be a good idea to do before the new school year starts.
Right, before the, like, the, like, the launch, so we should launch with it.
So I can work with Jennifer and have, ask her what's the best one they received.
Yes, yes, after, right.
And then I can shut up the process.
Roger's gonna do this.
Well, we have a, you know, there's a process of, you know, determining as a school committee, what we're gonna put on, that's right. And then that's, you know, that, that's just, you know, that's a to determine how to go about doing that, just to determine what it is. And then the process, then there's a process of doing it. Okay. That's it on communication?
Yeah, and the last piece is the, on August fifteenth.
Twenty-fifth.
August twenty-fifth. Chris Horan from Horan Communications will be working with the school committee on thinking about communication and branding and marketing. So more information will be shared with committee members as we get closer to the month of August, but save the date.
Is that expected to be like a four o'clock thing again?
Starting at six AM. It's going to be an evening session.
An evening session, okay.
They may, they might even have some comments on, on the website if you will, or the kind of messaging that you wanna have.
Is it sort of more school committee like related or is it sort of like this is what we're doing, like telling us what the district's doing?
It's more around branding and marketing of.
The best practices are, okay.
A little bit of both.
Okay.
All right, we've got some minutes to approve. I'm gonna do the first two together. So there is, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the Southboro School Committee Open Meeting Minutes of May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And the Southboro School Committee Special Open Meeting Minutes, which was virtual, on May fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Moved by Kamali. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Jen.
Jen?
Yeah, Jen.
Okay, seconded by Jen. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Please.
So I'm pretty sure May fourth was in person.
Yes.
Because that was town meeting.
So why do we have?
That was town meeting.
Oh, you're right. That was the town, that was the, okay, so.
That was one, one thing. And then I had another one too.
Also.
Okay, so consider that amended. It's not virtual.
And then on the May eleventh.
Uh, we are to May?
Is that the one you said?
Yes.
As you say?
Yeah.
That's the first one, yes, yes, yes.
Um, this is minor, but I'm pretty sure I nominated you for chair. And it says Kim did.
All right, Katura.
We just should be accurate.
We're gonna go on the hall and then we'll decide.
That's major, that's not.
That's my one change. Yes, that's my one change.
Okay. All right, so then that's also amended. Anything else? All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Now, I have a question on this. We have, so there are two subcommittee sets of minutes, right? We've got the capital planning subcommittee. Let's talk about that first. We can separate these. And although you can vote if you weren't there, I don't think you can vote if you aren't a member.
Correct.
Okay, so we're, so Katura, Jen, and myself will be voting on the capitals, the Southboro School Committee Capital Planning Subcommittee, which was a virtual meeting, I think, and I think that was a virtual meeting on October fourth.
Don't we usually do this in the subcommittee?
We do the end of the year processes. We try to wrap up all meetings. And since the subcommittees aren't meeting, it can, it's done at the session.
Jen and Katura, do you have any changes on those? All right, then I would accept a motion from somebody to approve those.
So moved?
Moved by Katura.
Second.
Seconded by Jen. Discussion. All in favor? Three, zero. And then the last one is the Operational Budget Subcommittee of the Southboro School Committee of January third, you all remember that, two thousand twenty-two. And those that were present, and I think the only members of the subcommittee, correct? Were Kamali Amelia and Jen Primack. So you have these. Do you, um, do you have any economic changes, Kamali or Jen?
No.
All right, then I would accept a motion from one of you to approve them.
Jen, so moved?
I'll second.
Moved by Kamali, seconded by Jen. All in favor? Opposed? Two, zero. Approval bills and payrolls agenda items for next month. Well, I would, uh, I don't think we have any agenda items. I mean, if people have, I'm sure people may have agenda items for the opening meeting, but you're welcome to email any thoughts you had.
So there's still our subcommittees still, right? Like assigning, we did the major ones, but we didn't.
I wouldn't put them in now. I mean.
No, I mean, oh, we'll talk about them next, next meeting, yeah.
Well, the first, well, no, the first meeting, what we would, what we will do is we'll, we'll, I think, have the subcommittees that are gonna be meeting, okay?
Yeah.
We will put people on those and then we'll take probably another month to actually have people look over the list and, and.
Then we're like into December, basically, before things start to meet, so.
We're into December before what?
Things start to meet. If we look at it and then make the decision like we assign in November, like then we're not meeting until December, like half the year is over.
Well, I, so what just happened in the first two months, September and October?
So, okay, what you said was?
The first meeting.
The first meeting.
September.
And then we, we talk about them.
We'll make sure that we have, no, we're gonna probably select people.
Oh, okay.
Okay, to be on key, key committees.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a month or so to look at the list and then in October, we'll round them out.
Okay.
Now, if there's a subcommittee meeting that we know is gonna be meeting
Yeah.
before the October meeting, we'll make sure that those, those folks are, are assigned to go appoint it. Make sense?
Yes, and I think I need to, like, know more about, like, some of the subcommittees that, like, never meet. Like, is it us that should be sort of driving that or do we, like, I don't know who? Like, so, so that's like not, that's a conversation that I just need to know logistically because I'm newish.
Well, some subcommittees that never meet will still never meet.
Why?
Name, name, the names of, there's no business. That's, that's, that's another discussion, right?
But that's a discussion, yes, right.
Yeah, in other words, the reason that subcommittees don't meet isn't because nobody wanted to be on the subcommittee. It's because there really wasn't any practical business to conduct. And then there's some, then there's some key ones. Anything else for the public comment?
This is not a, an agenda item, but I think we discussed an action item, which is to make sure that we have a plan of how to talk with the website development person to, to provide input to it. So that's, that can be done.
Our, our pace.
Well, that, yeah, that maybe, that's probably a conversation we have to figure out how to have.
Correct.
You know, without violating any open meeting laws, okay?
Maybe do like the master plan.
Well, that's also, that's also why I mentioned that maybe the, that retreat, okay, might also, also.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Also might add some ideas.
Yes, right, right.
And are we in a, are we in a, an open meeting at that retreat?
We, we.
Not necessarily.
We've done it both ways where we called, we've posted the meetings, first year, the second year, we, we didn't. It was just informational stuff.
Yeah, this is, this is, I think, still relatively informational, isn't it? I'm not sure that I.
Isn't it like a training?
It's a training.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, it's really a training. So I don't think, we're not gonna be voting on things.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good.
And that's, that's a good point, Roger. If we came with a draft to that meeting.
No prohibition against emailing between any two members, you know, throughout the next couple of months or any kind of communication.
So I have a suggestion. I found myself watching the entire Northborough School Committee meeting. And they do something at the end that I think we should consider. They report out on their subcommittees. And I thought that was really kind of informative for the group.
They report out on any subcommittee meetings that occurred between, since, since their last meeting.
Right. And, and so my thought was, other, if we're not doing that, like, how are we getting that information? So like, NSPAC's a good example, right? Like, how is Katura and Jen getting the information from Kamali's participation? Right? And like, that's just an easy example, but.
It's actually a pretty good idea, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, something to think about. So I, I do think in the two years I've been involved, like, we, we are doing that, but maybe not at the frequency of every single meeting. So, yeah.
I think some of the information comes out in other areas of the agenda, right? So like capital planning, you have the capital thing, the master plan, operational budget, but not everything.
If you're talking about NSPAC specifically, I would say that's a, well, I would say that's a good one.
Yeah.
But it's also true, I was just thinking that many other subcommittee actions
Right.
do get reported out, you know?
Yeah.
Whether it's a policy, you know, whether it's capital planning, whether it's, so a lot of those just happen.
Yeah.
NSPAC's one I can think of
Yeah.
that I don't know that we report out. And there's some interest on a regular basis, and I think it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, like, I don't, I can't remember, but there was like a bunch of, they had a bunch of things to say about different ASCAS.
Yeah, okay.
I don't remember.
That's it. Okay.
Something to consider for our agendas next, next year.
There won't be much, there won't be many subcommittee reports on the first meeting, but after that.
First meeting, yes.
What else we got?
The motions are adjourned.
Yes.
Well, well. Let's have public comments. Okay, hearing none. I guess I, I guess I will ask for a motion to adjourn, although I'm not.
Isn't there an executive session?
Well, um, there's for the, for, for this evening?
So there is an executive session listed on there.
Was it posted?
It was posted.
Yeah.
However, it's the rule of the committee that it can also adjourn and not go into the session.
Wait, what, does it have? Do we have a topic?
We do.
Yeah, it's to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto and not to reconvene in open session.
Yeah, I misunderstood this. I thought that this was describing what we were going to be doing at some time, but we're ready to discuss that? Is that something we want to discuss? Is that something we want to discuss now?
Yes, yeah, I would like to, yeah.
I think that we will adjourn and then we will, so the motion is gonna be to adjourn the, the open meeting and move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies and strategies with respect thereto and will not reconvene in open session. So that's the motion. Is there a, so moved?
So moved by Kamali.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ken? All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
And we need to, yeah, to call the adjournment, but that's right, so we need to do a roll call. Kamali?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Jen?
Yes.
I will, yes, that's unanimous.
Thank you.